Does that work? Good. Welcome to the October 18th, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting, which is now officially called to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Supervisor Foy.
I'm here.
Supervisor Long.
Here, also.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
I'm here, too. And with that, Supervisor Long, can you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, thank you. Governor Hart, ready to begin.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice ground.
And our next item on the agenda are the minutes. And actually, I had a request, I know, on the minutes regarding the item on the dark skies ordinance. It states to accept staff's recommendation, but it was actually a recommendation of the Board of Supervisors. And I wanted to get that out there. And then it also referenced to look for a grant, and that was specifically with the naval base Ventura County, looking at the coastal zone. And if there are no objections, I'd like that to be included in the minutes. And with that, then I'll go ahead and make the motion with that revision. And we can all vote. And that passes. Thank you. And now we'll go on to our agenda review with our CEO, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Item 11, CEO's office approval of the grant agreement supporting the Pay for Success project with the nonprofit finance fund and accept the grant award in the amount of $90,693. A board letter and exhibits 1 through 3 have been received. In addition, Agenda Page 4, Agenda title has been modified to include minor changes in accordance with the board letter, and only recommendations numbers 2 and 6 require a four-fifth vote. Items 12 and 14, Department of Airports approval of a fiscal year 2016 budget adjustment for the Airport Capital Projects Fund, revised board letter has been submitted. In addition, request to hear items 12 and 14 as regular agenda items. 12 and 14. Item 27, Supervisor Parks, presentation of a resolution proclaiming the week of October 24 through 29, 2016, as California flood preparedness weaken Ventura County. PowerPoint has been submitted by the Watershed Protection District. Item 29, Auditor Controller, receive and file receipt of information and annual review of accounts or funds containing developer fees. Revised Exhibit 1 has been submitted. Item 30, RMA, receive and file a report regarding benzene injection wells and drinking water. Revised Exhibit 1, a PowerPoint, and a report from Sea Frog have been submitted. And finally, item 32, Healthcare Agency, VCMC, approval of a settlement agreement and release with Winthrop and a lease agreement and related documents for the lease of medical facilities' equipment from Winthrop, a board letter and exhibits 1 through 4 have been submitted. And that's it.
You sure there's nothing else?
Yeah. Give me a minute, I'll come up.
Okay. And then if the board has any changes to the agenda, otherwise we can accept the revisions and revisions to the agenda. Okay, so that is approved unanimously. And right now, then, we'll go to our moment of inspiration, Mr. Santos, if you'd like to come up. Dr. Santos, excuse me, was recently named 2016 Administrator of the Year by the California Association of Latino Superintendents and Administrators. That is wonderful to hear, and very well deserved. Dr. Manuel Santos is the Director of Student Support Services in the Canejo Valley Unified School District in Southern California. He oversees programs that provide assistance and resources for students, including mental health programs, gate attendance SARB, health services, and Section 504 plans. He also serves as the district liaison for foster and homeless youth. Dr. Santos has taught students in elementary, middle, and high school, and he's been an adjunct professor of the University of Laverne's Teaching Credential Program. He has also been a school administrator at both the elementary and secondary level, and his passion for serving others is evident in his work with Upward Bound Program at CAL-LOO and CAL-SA's Mentoring Protege Program. And having seen Dr. Santos in action, your award as Administrator of the Year couldn't have been given to a better person, and I'm delighted that you're able to come here this morning because I do think you are an inspiration to us. So I'll turn it over to you and give you an opportunity to let us hear.
No, thank you, Ann. Actually, good morning to everybody here. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you supervisors, Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Long, Supervisor Saragosa, Supervisor Bennett, and thank you, Chair, Supervisor Parks. As mentioned, my name is Dr. Juan Manuel Santos, and I am the Director of Student Support Services for the Canejo Valley Unified School District. It's my honor this morning to speak to all of you, to share the story of how doors have opened up for me in my life, providing you with some inspiration. Lyndon B. Johnson once said, "We must open the doors of opportunity, but we must also equip our people to walk through those doors." This quote is the epitome of my life in that others have opened doors of opportunity for me, and I find it, it's my calling to give back, both professionally and personally, to open doors for others. I'm currently enrolled in an executive leadership class at California Lutheran University, and our first presenter, former Ventura Unified Superintendent Dr. Trudy Ariaga, shared her stories about opening doors, and that's the title of one of her books. Her message hit home for me, and I wanted to share with you some of those doors that have opened up. First and foremost, growing up in Bakersfield, California, which many would consider the armpit of California, for me, it was Sister Maria Luisa from Our Lady of Guadalupe School who identified myself as a gate student. And from there, she opened up the door to pursuing my academic potential. It was those, that opportunity that provided me teachers like Ms. Lundquist or my other AP or honors class teachers who opened me up to different cultures, to the words of Walt Whitman. But it wasn't just what Walt had said, but it was what that teacher in that class provided me, a donut. A donut that was filled more so than other donuts I've ever had before, and what I would find out later on, that it was not a donut, it was a bagel. And because of that bagel, I paid attention a little bit further, and I remember Walt Whitman and how I was challenged in the words of Song of Myself where he mentioned, "Do I contradict myself very well, then I contradict myself on large, I contain multitudes." Because of that, that moved me to learn and experience different cultures. It was Coach Perimeter who would do something as simple as providing me cleats when I showed up with soccer cleats on for my first day of football practice, knowing, "Son, you're going to be mocked. Let me give you a pair of cleats." And that opened up the door and showed me the importance of school connection, which I would later write my dissertation on. How about college? It's that anonymous benefactor who provided me an opportunity to attend a basketball camp at California Lutheran University in the summer. And because of that, that was the only college that I knew about and that I attended. That person opened me up to the world of higher education. It was that guidance counselor, Mrs. Gloria, who after my first day of going through orientation and sitting with an advisor, that person asked me, "Hey, what classes are you taking?" And I sat there looking at them. "What do you mean? Don't you help me select that?" And they said, "No, come back in a little bit, once you decided." And she saw me lost and took me in and decided, "I will share with you what classes, son, you need to take." But more importantly, she opened me up to services like Student Support Services at California Lutheran University, where I would meet then-director Oscar Kobian, who is the director, actually, the VP of Student Development at Oxnard College at this moment, where he would show me and allow me to teach for the Upward Bound Program for first-generation low-income students who want to attend college. It was there that he opened me up to providing opportunities for students like myself who had no idea what college was about. Now, mind you, I was second in my class to graduate in high school, and yet I knew of no other universities at the time. The potential could have been greater for me, and I wouldn't let that pass me by. Opening doors to my careers, it was people like Mike Waters, who was the principal at Calena at the time, who told me, "Son, I know you want to counsel students, but if you really want to counsel, you need to be an administrator, so you can go ahead and change policy." From there was Robert Yates, our Deputy Superintendent of the District, Mark McLaughlin, who is Assistant Superintendent in Canejo Valley Unified School District, and Dr. Antonio Castro, who's now at the Ventura County Office of Education, who's provided me opportunities to enter the realm of the East County, so I can provide opportunities, change policy and procedures. And lastly, it's CALSA, which I wanted to share with you about today, which is the California Association of Latino Superintendents and Administrators, an organization led by current Oxnard Elementary Superintendent Dr. Cesar Morales, that it provided me both with mentoring and an opportunity to assist them of our most at-risk youth in California. Recently, I was honored and was the first recipient of a $10,000 scholarship, part of the Mentoring Minds Program. And of that $10,000, I donated half to Maple Elementary School, where I was principal for the past four years, hopefully opening up doors for students there. This has opened me up to the importance of mentoring and being mentored, listening to other people's story as well as accepting their story and making it part of my own. You see, my position currently as Director of Student Support Service, I like to think of myself as a door opener. My main responsibility is to make sure students have what they need to be in school and to access their learning, whether it's health-related or attendance-related, gate or gifted and talented education or more. My department provides resources and supports to open doors for students to be successful. I feel very fortunate to have many doors open in my life, and I look back now to those, and I hope to provide the same for others. And so with that, I leave you with the words of Dr. Trudy Ariaga. Actually, they're Paul McCartney, if you remember the song. So bear with me in my own singing voice. Someone's knocking at the door, somebody's ringing the bell. Someone's knocking at the door, somebody's ringing the bell. Do me a favor, open the door and let them in. For you, in your position, help others leave the door open, and to help others by guiding them to those doors, especially our youth who have no idea what those doors will lead them to. Provide them the pathways that extend beyond their current doorways, their current paths, especially our most at-risk, whether they're foster youth and homeless, for they have no doorway. Provide them that door. Thank you, and as I always say, be your best.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Dr. Santos, I want to thank you for sharing your life experience. It's really important for, you're a role model for our youth. Thank you so much. And just what you shared today can open a lot of doors, you know, for our youth, and thank you so much for the good work that you've done. Thank you.
Yeah, I too, just thank you so much for sharing, and then also being that role model, and how fortunate those students are to be able to have you there. And you really do make a difference in people's lives and people who need to know that there is a lot of opportunity out there, and they may not otherwise have it. And I'm just so happy that you were able to get those opportunities and that you're wanting to give back and share. Very inspirational. Thank you.
It was an inspirational moment. Thank you.
I'm sorry, out of my way to work, I have to go to G-Club.
Keep playing.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we'll now go on to our next agenda item. These are almost 11 through 26, but we have pulled off, as I remember, items, was it 12 and 14? Plus, we have a speaker on 17. I'd like to have a question on 13, which is airports, and comment on 19, which is Watershed Protection District. How about you guys? So why don't we go to the public first, which is, we have someone on item 17 who has a speaker card, and this is Monica Lindsay.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to see you all again. In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I am back before you again as a survivor of stage three breast cancer, and I am also a Gold Coast or Medi-Cal patient. I am happy to see that you guys are stepping up enrollment efforts to be able to help others in our community. I would like to ask that if there are any open spots on any advisory boards that have room for patients and caregivers like myself, I would love the opportunity. I have had a varied experience while using the state-funded healthcare system, and through the difficulties, I have identified ways that I think that I might be able to suggest ways to improve. My daughter Mia is now eight, and when she was first born, she had seizures right after birth. And through the early intervention program in Tri-County's Regional Center, they identified cognitive delays, and she needed eye surgery. It took a long time to get the service authorized, and by the time she had the surgery, her vision was severely degraded. And it also took more time to ask for the authorizations to get more help for her eyes. I asked to see a doctor again, the same doctor who told me that it was too expensive to have a mammogram three times in two years. I begged and was told it was too expensive and Medi-Cal wouldn't cover it. The same doctor is also the same doctor who took almost two years to authorize a follow-up visit for my daughter's eyes to be checked. There are extreme deficiencies in the way that referrals are handled, carried out, and followed up on, and there is currently no way for a parent such as myself to ensure that the referrals that you have asked for and advocated for are being followed up on and done. As a result, my daughter Mia has suffered a lot. She's been called a bad kid. She had to go to a special ed program. When it turns out, she just can't see in one eye, and we've been asking for help for years. So I love seeing that more progress is being made and more funds are being allocated towards healthcare for our county's most vulnerable. But as someone who is used to the hospital rigmarole, my son has had three heart surgeries. This is my first rodeo. I know how to ask for the help I need. And if I had such an extreme difficulty and continue to have such an extreme difficulty accessing the services which you are throwing a lot of money at, I want to know why, and I want to know how we can do better. And I would like to be allowed to help and make suggestions as someone who has gone through the proper channels and been denied, and to add insult to injury. Just a couple weeks ago, I received a bill from the state of California, and they have the nerve to tell me that now I have a share of cost for the month of June of 2015? I'm pretty sure that a mammogram would have been a lot cheaper than a double mastectomy, my lymph nodes being removed, and all the therapy that has come along with it. I'm asking that you take a look at how the funds are being used, who is receiving the services, and how timely they are being given. Please.
Ms. Lindsay, I want to thank you for coming. I want to thank you for wanting to help others. I mean, you have your plate full, just helping yourself and your family, I know that. And I just say how kind of you to want to help others. And certainly, when there are deficiencies, we need to hear about them, we need to do what we can to fix them. Mr. Powers, did you want to comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Parks. Thank you so much, Ms. Lindsay. Our healthcare director, Johnson Gill, is here, he's right there, and he'd be happy to hear those concerns. I think it'd be very good for us to follow up on the issues that you've raised, and we'd like to do that. So that's Mr. Gill right there. So, thank you for coming.
And I'd also, I'd also like to ask if there, I noticed that there was an unscheduled vacancy on the Women's Economic Roundtable. I have a lot of ideas, and they come from a completely different background. As you know, I also represent the Ventura County Cannabis Alliance, and the moment of inspiration that I just heard was very inspirational.
Wasn't it?
There's a lot more that could be done for the students of Ventura County, and I would also like to invite all of you to attend the event that's being held in downtown Ventura, October 29. Open Classroom is holding their Harvest Moon Festival. It's being done in conjunction with the Downtown Ventura Merchants Association, and my kids' school has been such a great support, little alternative education programs like Open Classroom, Scrappy Little Hippie School at the end of Blanche Reynolds. They were such a great support to me, the entire community. You know, it's not everybody's cup of tea. It's non-traditional, but it's so important to keep programs like that, you know, for the families that don't quite fit the regular mold. So, thank you.
Ms. Lindsay, I just have one question for you. I forgot the information from your card, but do you know whether my staff has your phone number?
I don't think so.
Would you mind just going from here, going up to the fourth floor, and going to my office, and making sure my staff has your phone number so they can follow up with you about your testimony this morning, Steph Olson?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know you were thrilled to get your hair back, and it looks great. It looks, it looks really nice. Congratulations on that. Okay.
The after-effects of chemo.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. So that was the item on number 17, and we have that before us. Also, on our consent agenda, we have a request looking at items 13 and 19. So 13, it's just a real simple one. I couldn't find in the staff report which airport you would have the event if you are awarded it.
So, good morning, Todd McLeary, Director of Airports. It's Camaria Airport that hosts the event.
Oh, is it? Okay, yeah, I thought it might be, but didn't see it in the report.
Interesting.
And you, yeah, let me know if you do. And then also, you will notify residents if you do get that special day where all the...
There'll be a lot of outreach locally and across the nation for an event like this, yes.
And for the public, that's an item to have the airport use as a fly-in event in 2017, right?
Correct.
And then you'd get maybe a couple thousand people showing up, 400 airplanes or so.
Yeah, it's a different event than the airshow. The airshow is where we're doing flying acts, inviting the local community and others to attend at the airport, where this is really a fly-in for the pilot population to come and visit the airport and learn more about Ventura County and our two airports.
Check out our restaurants and things like that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure which...
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add a little bit to that, in that we're in the Airport Authority, and I think this is a good event for Ventura County, and we're competing with other airports, right, Todd?
So we are. We're a finalist, and they're supposed to make an announcement, I think, within the next 30 to 45 days, and so we just want to be prepared to move forward should we be selected.
And it's going to help our shopping centers, or restaurants, or hotels, and...
It's estimated between two, well, between $150,000 and $300,000 positive economic benefit for that weekend by this event.
Which is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for answering the questions. On item 19, this is to authorize $783,000 for cleaning out those vaults that are in the, we've just installed, correct, in Miners Oaks, and one more area, and this is a way to clean the rainwater, the stormwater, and then we then have to do the maintenance of these also, is that correct?
Yes, good morning. For the record, my name is Peter Shade. I'm the interim director for Ventura County Watershed Protection District. There are three sites, Miners Oaks, and we'll be maintaining the vault sitter in the road right away, and the OVLC will be maintaining the planted areas as part of the diversion. And there's two other sites, both here in the Santa Clara Valley area, one here in our government center, the pervious pavement, and the other one in El Rio.
Okay. So I just bring this to our attention because when we approve capital projects, we don't necessarily have the information about the long-term maintenance costs. And this one's not even long-term, it's pretty short-term, as I see it. Just installed, and then within the next five years, we need to go out there. And I can understand that, you know, these collect pollutants, right, and they need to be removed, correct?
Right, yes. If they're not maintained, then they lose their effectiveness. The pervious will not be pervious anymore if they get clogged, and certainly, the two vaults in Miners Oaks collect trash and leaf litter that needs to be removed.
Okay, and that's just the comment. It'd be good to have the information in the reports when we approve the projects about the maintenance costs that will follow up.
Yeah, we'll make sure to include that in future reports.
Yeah, I agree, supervisor. I think that's, we approve something, and then we're going to be doing this. Is this going to be a regular basis for us, right? Every three to five years, depending on rainfall and everything else, right?
The maintenance will be, and it was included in the grant requirements. We may look at the future in self-performing this, that may be less costly, but for now, because of the small number of sites we have, it seems more cost-effective to have contractors perform the reports.
Well, I'm sure it's always going to be cheaper if the contractors do it, but it's just part of this cost of ongoing, you know, here's what it costs to do this, the grant, and then we've got this ongoing cost that we should, I would just ask that it be mandatory that that come before us with a real good estimate, and then we can check what these estimates are, because it's great we're doing, but it, you know, at some point, you've got 100 of these out there, it's going to get real expensive to clean these out and try to figure that out, so, okay, thanks.
And with that understanding, too, saying, is there other technology out there that doesn't require continuous maintenance like this, and whether it's just looking at bioswells where they will work instead of underground vaults, for example?
Yes.
Uh-oh.
We hear you loud and clear. These do seem extraordinarily high, but this is, part of the grant was an experimental cleaning method, so the equipment's new, so that's built in. We can get out of this contract anytime we want. Almost certainly, we can self-perform this cheaper than the contractors can do it. We're not doing it because it's just so little at this point in time, and over time, we're going to have a whole bunch more of this. There's about an acre out there right now, the stuff that we had. So on a per-square-foot basis, unit price is really high, but part of this is looking, it was part of the grant requirement, to look at this new experimental way to clean them. And this may not, you know, and we'll be done with it, when we're done with it.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, we haven't had a lot of rain. If we'd had more rain, more water, more things coming through, would this been, sooner we would have had to clean this, or what would have been different?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question. I think you could argue both ways, but that's what we're going to find out.
Okay. Yeah, and like you said, I appreciate the opportunity, experiment, like she said, maybe there's other ways to look at these things. Just like you said, it could be a lot more acreage to have to deal with this a long way.
And a final footnote, all the stuff that we put in the ground like this, the vaults, whether they're wet weather dropped, they're going to be intensive maintenance costs, but we will put them in the board letters from now on. That's a good point.
Yeah, even just doing the storm drains, you know, we get comments from the public, you know, "They haven't cleaned it in a long time," and we can smell, and all those kind of things. So I know that you guys are continually doing a lot of maintenance out there, but this just adds another big chunk to that, it sounds like, in terms of costs.
Yep, and that cost is coming through the stormwater requirements, right? So thank you very much.
Yeah, and particularly when there aren't dedicated funds for it either, so that makes it even more difficult. So those were the two items that I wanted to get information on. So now, if there aren't any others, we have then agenda items, consent items, all the consent items except for 12 and 14, which we are putting on the regular agenda. We have a motion and a second. And we all voted. Next, we'll go then. Someone has not voted. Someone has not voted. Who shall go nameless. There we go. And that is approved unanimously. And now, I will go to our public comment section of our agenda, and we have Mr. Hassan. Bella. Good morning.
I'm hoping I can say this in a very short period of time. My complaint is against one agency, it's against three agencies that I've experienced a very strong neglect and not only discrimination. So, for one, it would be the Superior Court, VCBH, Turning Point, and Human Services Agency. Now, I don't know if you guys oversee the Superior Court, but I know that you guys do oversee the three others. My concern isn't so much with that I was denied services from all three agencies at one point in time, actually, within the past year. My major concern is with the two agencies, VCBH and Turning Point, feeling that it was fully appropriate to deem and label me suicidal and homicidal without any assessment whatsoever, kick me out onto the street, take actions that also led me to lose my job with the City of Ventura, and not give me any referral for, to continue treatment. I don't think it's very beneficial to people that have a mental illness to be, for one, labeled either one of those, because all that promotes is social rejection. But for them feeling that they have the power to do that without an assessment, which I'm told is obligated by law, not take steps to place me on a psychiatric hold if they did deem me that, and... Anyway. I'm not trying to blame you guys, but ultimately, when these agencies are able to get so far in what they do, that ultimately comes back, the responsibility comes back on you guys, because if there's no regulation or no enforcement being upheld by these three agencies that you guys are funding, and they're not doing the job that they're supposed to do, there is no, the crisis team was on-site at a time that I was deemed an imminent threat to myself and others, and there was six weeks for, since their initial concern with me, you know, sharing some things regarding my depression, to when they could have gotten me help, they had plenty of time. They were on-site at a time that I was deemed an imminent threat, and they didn't even feel it was appropriate to come in and assess me, or even approach me to see if I, the client, was okay. And if that's not what the crisis team is doing, what else are they doing? Like, what purpose do they serve, and why are you guys funding them if they're not doing the jobs that they're told, that they're, that they're being, that they're claiming that they're providing? Now, that's a very, I feel like this is a very serious public concern, because if they're deeming people either one of the two, and they're allowing them to go on without treatment, that's probably why we have such a high, so much mentally ill on the street, not getting the treatment that they deserve. And I want to know why this was allowed to get so far, because I've been speaking about this for exactly ten months now, and I've had little to no support. So, thank you.
And Mr. Hassan, we, could you tell us where you live, so we know which supervisor might be able to follow up?
Currently, I live in Oxnard. This happened mainly in Ventura. The Human Services Agency, though, that denied me services, was in Ventura.
I understand. And obviously, we're just getting this, and it's a snapshot, we don't really have all the information.
Absolutely.
But it is something that we would like to follow up on, make sure that you are getting the services that you need. And Mr. Powers, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that we have our behavioral health director here, Elaine Crandall, in the back, as well as our HSA director, Barry Zimmerman, who can listen to you directly right afterwards.
Okay, so I did bring this up very early on with them, and all it seems that they are more interested in doing is not actually paying attention to my concerns, which makes me very uncomfortable to get back into services, because if I lose the trust with the people that were supposed to be there for me, how am I expected to, because I shared, anyway, if I, if I lose that trust with the people that are supposed to be there for me, how am I expected to actually get back into services? And honestly, I feel like I'm doing a lot much better on my own than I could ever get from any professional help. Yeah, because-
Well, thank you, thank, yes, sir.
I'd like to share that we have worked with Mr. Hassan. My office has, you know-
Absolutely. Actually, I want to thank, yes, his office has actually been working with me, and I do want to actually give a shout-out, I guess, to-
Lourdes.
Lourdes. She's an amazing woman, and she has been very helpful. And honestly, like, you guys can hire more people like her, I think, you know.
Lourdes is wonderful.
And I just want to share with her that we are trying to help the young man, and work with Elaine, and hopefully, maybe you can regain the trust, you know, that-
And you are here for a reason. You're seeking services, so we want to provide them. So, I appreciate you coming and expressing the concern of you feeling like you haven't been given the services that you should have. And at this time, then, appreciate your comments, and we will continue. Best of luck. Our next item on our agenda, then, is going to our board comments, and we'll start. That's good with you, Supervisor Zaragosa?
Thank you so much. I'd like to share that last week, I attended the Knights of Columbus Civic Night. In fact, Mr. Powers was there also, and it was a great evening civic night. We had Judge Cooper Rubius, Honorable Judge Cooper Rubius, made an excellent, excellent presentation on behalf of what they're doing in the court system. Also, I had the opportunity the other day to take my staff around the harbor. You know, we have quite a few concerns on the harbor, and I wanted just to take my staff out there to have a look at exactly where the things are, where the museum is, where the bisque is, and just to understand exactly what locations people are talking about when we go there. It was great. We had breakfast there at Olson's. Mrs. Olson's, it's fantastic breakfast, if you want to go there, at the harbor, it was great. And also, I attended a housing ribbon-cutting over in Oxnard for seniors, and it was just an excellent, excellent opportunity for people to move in. We had some apartments, brand-new apartments, running for about five hundred dollars a month, you know, which is really, really fantastic. And they have a list of some six hundred people waiting to rent there at that location. Also, I, in Island Acres, we had a cleanup this, last weekend. Almost thirteen tons of refuse was removed from the, from the location, sofas and mattresses and so forth, that really helped the community. And also, I want to shout out and give a really shout to Marvin Booze. You know, he went and cleaned the South Bank of graffiti. We had probably maybe a quarter mile of graffiti there on the South Bank levee. We painted that, the graffiti, over and, over the graffiti, and also cleaned up a lot of the trash along the river there, too. And again, you know, I want to thank Bill Gallagher and also Lourdes again, our star out there, you know, for helping out, you know, and taking, she went and took drinks and donuts and so forth for, for the people working out there. So, I want to thank Public Works and also probation, Mark Verell's people, and Jeff Prentz, people for, for helping out. And that's it. I'd like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I want to call out one. Really principled human being died, Ernie Rashar, up in Ojai, and he was a remarkable man and a great friend, and sorry to have lost him. This past week, we had a chance to sort of revitalize the Matilla Ha Dam removal effort, leadership from Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, State Senator Hanabett Jackson, lots of people from all the various agencies involved, and sort of launching sort of the, the next wave of effort to try to remove the dam and engage in that ecosystem restoration project that we've been after for fifteen years now, and we sure hope it's not fifteen more years before we're done with it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Long?
Yes, good morning, and thank you. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory, calling out just one, Dr. Christopher D. Smith. He was a highly regarded emergency physician at St. John's Pleasant Valley Hospital. On his retirement, he became a volunteer physician with Doctors Without Borders, serving campaigns in both Nigeria and South Sudan. And he'll certainly be missed by the community. I'd like to express appreciation to the event I attended for the Diversity Gala for the Diversity Collaborative. And at that event, they recognize youth community service awards, community service awards, community hero awards, that included our very own Diane Von Hinman, Dr. Robert Levin, and the Santa Paula West Pride Clinic. So, it's great to be there with them to celebrate that recognition. And also, kudos out to our probation agency officers. We received this information of DPO Travis Prater, DPO Nick Schrader, Senior DPO Salvador Herrera, and Senior DPO Dolores Barnett. They responded to a horrible accident on the 101, semi-truck damaged Mercedes, and a pickup truck rolled over. They stopped their vehicle, and they responded to those who needed help, certainly assisting with getting the driver out of the rolled-over pickup truck that was at the bottom of a embankment, and helping them responding quickly before even the emergency response team showed up. So, they clearly helped a lot of people in dire circumstances, and they, just to express appreciation for that. It's not something that you have to do, but certainly something they knew an accident, serious accident had occurred, and they rose to the challenge. So, appreciation to them.
Yeah, I think we should do something to recognize them. That was pretty outstanding.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I also had the opportunity to, oh, first, I wanted to also extend kudos and great work to our Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance people. They were recognized by the Central California Local Government Partnership, and receiving an award for energy efficiency, bundling, and the great work that's been done here locally through the outreach of the Energy Alliance, as we celebrated Energy Efficiency Month. So, to Alejandra and the team, congratulations, and great work to them. And I was able to kick off just with some hip hip hurrah's, I'm a great cheerleader, Melissa Livingston, she was here, she stepped out, wearing her Red Cross hat on the board. I went out to Santa Paula on a Saturday morning to thank wonderful volunteers, most of them young people from our Red Cross teams in our various high schools, as they went out for the home fire campaign event, and most of you are familiar with that, where they, in this month, they go out and they install smoke alarms and provide preparedness education. They installed two hundred and ninety-four smoke alarms, provided preparedness education for eighty-nine homes, serving a grand total of three hundred and forty-two people one day in Santa Paula. Thank you and appreciate it. Great work. And also, received some update information from the Public Defender's Office. Rod Codman sent this to me. I asked for it, and he sent it over, and it was basically an update on stats for our Veterans Treatment Court. And the Public Defender's Office represents approximately eighty percent of the vets who need services. Two years ago, there were less than twenty-five in the Veterans Treatment Court, and they're currently serving a hundred and two. Forty-eight veterans are in for screening eligibility and suitability. Fifty-four veterans participate in Veterans Treatment Court, which includes diversion. And to announce on November third and fourth, there will be a conference called Access to Justice for Veterans: Coordinated Response of a Grateful Nation, and speakers certainly include our Congresswoman, and it will be focused on restoration and honor for these public servants, and that conference will, will receive further information on it. And let me see. Well, we all, again, received news about this, and that's for our wonderful Tara Diller and our Animal Services Group, and the fact that they were able to go after and get from FEMA two trailers through Homeland Security Grant. And the first trailer has arrived, and it is really to help with when we have emergencies and animals need to be rescued and need to be, have facilities, have services provided to them. So, the trailers cost upwards of thirty thousand dollars each, and the team at our Animal Services pushed for the grants and received two of them. So, congratulations again. And that wraps it. Thank you.
That was some creative grant-getting, wasn't it?
Yeah.
For the emergency trailers through our shelter.
Absolutely was.
Just real quick, I want to adjourn people on this list. It's kind of a long list, but there's just one person that I'd call out, Ms. Anne Heron. She was ninety-seven years old, lived in Sevi for about fifty-three years. Kind of a quiet, eventual life, though, living through the Great Depression. You know, she worked as a welder in Detroit, one of the, the original Rosie, the riveter, it was kind of neat, and then, but she leaves behind eighteen grandchildren, thirty-nine great-grandchildren, sixteen great-great-grandchildren, one great-great-great-grandchild, total of seventy-four grandchildren in five generations. So, kind of a unique thing, and so I know that everybody, there's a lot of people to miss her. So, anyway, just, that's real quick. Thanks.
Thank you.
Somebody in that family's having, having children at a young age to get to five, five generations, right, you know? Well, good for her.
And just a couple of comments. I want to call out Mike Cudditt for coming to the SOMA's Municipal Advisory Council, gave a good presentation, the concerns about being able to get internet service there. That is a decent service, and understanding the complexities of the law and what cable companies can and can't do. It was very helpful, and appreciate him coming out that evening. Also, I got to participate in the League of Women Voters, or, excuse me, the AAUW, Association of American University Women, to discuss a, one book, one read that they have in the city of Thousand Oaks, and it was on Grandma Gatewood's Walk. She decided, in the ages of late sixties and early seventies, to go walk the Appalachian Trail, taking off like an entire summer. And by the time she was in her seventies, she had walked the Appalachian Trail three times, so two thousand mile-plus hike. And it was just pretty inspirational, and this was back in the nineteen fifties, and there wasn't any camping gear. It was just kind of put a sack over her shoulder and decided she's going. And carried maybe twelve to twenty pounds at most in her sack, and just an amazing inspiration. And when we talk about wearing just, you know, like kids' tennis shoes, and, you know, and when you see what we do now with our hiking gear, what you can do with that kind of determination and the wonderful experiences she had along the way. And then, just to kick it off, she decided to do the Oregon Trail, too. So, she just couldn't stop walking, and really brought attention to particularly the Appalachian Trail and getting it made better, because there were a lot of obstacles at that time when she was trying to walk it. Just kind of saw a National Geographic magazine in her doctor's office, and they showed pictures of the Appalachian Trail. And the library director who began our program the other night actually had that National Geographic with and shared, and you look at the pictures, and it, it looks, all the, the models and stuff out there, it looks so perfectly dressed, and iron clothes, and their hair, and, you know, all curly. And it was just pretty funny, because that's not at all what it's like once you get out there hiking. But she enjoyed it and was an inspiration, too. Even today, people go out there because of her inspiration, her story, and you realize you can just about do anything, if she can do that in her seventies. I think I also just want to ask that we close in honor of the people on the list that I'm submitting. And I do want to call out a very sad incident, Maria Acevito. She was the owner of Margarita's Mexican Grill in Oak Park, which was right next to a restaurant we were at the other time the board was super, was there. She was actually killed by her son, who had a mental disorder. a mental disorder. And so that was just very shocking and again, just highlighting how important it is that we are out there and able to help people with mental illness to avoid such tragedies. So I did want to call her out as well as the people on that list. With that concludes my comments. I'm going to go to the CEO, Mr. Powers, for his comments.
Thank you, Chair Parks, Board members. A couple of items. Let you know that there's a VC Wellness Fair going on today just outside the Hall of Administration here at 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock. Health plans will be out there, county health plan, Blue Cross, dental plan, vision plan, but also financial wellness. Information will be provided. Deferred Comp First Time Home Buyer Program as well as free flu shots. So in addition to that, there'll be a number, probably over a dozen, health benefits informational sessions throughout the county. And you can go to the benefits website and they'll show you where and when those are. So also on your board's behalf, attended the Sheriff's Academy graduation on October 7th and about 20 really high caliber, high quality folks joining the ranks of our Sheriff's Department. I've also been asked to join the P-20 Education Committee. And then just finally, I wanted to recognize some folks. We've got some CSAC Merit Awards. Our Own Service Excellence Program was recognized by CSAC. And I think it's just about the only lean-six program of the 58 counties. There's others who are trying to get on board. In fact, Paul Stamper, Deputy CEO, was leading that program, as you know, and he's teaching courses on this for CSAC and other counties because it's been so successful here. And also Sheriff's OES won a CSAC Merit Award for the Office of Emergency Services' Mobile Application. And Kevin Ko, Department Leader from IT, is here. And just be interested if you could share a few comments. Paul?
Thank you, Chair Parks, Board members, CEO Powers, Paul Stamper with the CEO's office. This award by CSAC really represents a recognition of the body of work from all the employees here at the county. Really outstanding effort with the mentality that we encourage, which is every employee has two jobs. One is to do their work and the other is to improve their work. As a result, we've had almost 1,000 improvements since the program began, over 28 million in savings. And as Mike mentioned, CSAC calls us up every year to train through their CSAC Institute. And this is a real example of leadership for Ventura County, for the state, because we're frequently asked to visit other counties to provide training for them as well.
Thank you, Paul.
Good morning, Chair Parks, CEO, Mr. Powers, and members of the board. This award actually just represents our continued excellence towards developing mobile applications. This adds to our gallery of mobile applications that we've developed for the county of Ventura. I want to recognize Glenn Sahagan, who sits over here, as well as Cynthia Elliott, who's the Sheriff's Account Manager for close coordination with OES and the development of this mobile application. It really represents the message that OE has about being prepared. Get a kit, be prepared, make a plan, stay informed, and get involved. It's a great application that allows people to develop kits, make emergency contacts, and has a lot of useful information in there. It also offers the Fireline active incidents on the mobile application as well. So we're very happy to win the award.
Well, great work on both programs. Congratulations to your whole team. Thank you.
All right. And with that then, we'll go to our regular agenda items. And our first item on the regular agenda is item 31.
Airports, 12 and 14.
Let's go ahead and do the two that we took out of consent.
I know Todd and Joyce is hanging out.
Sorry, otherwise you may be here all day, right?
It's great to see government in action. Good morning, Todd McNamee, your Director of Airports, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. So a couple of things have happened, but this is really, one is a timing issue. These are time-sensitive items and the authority just met for Camarillo and Oxnard Airport Authorities last Thursday. The process to get the letters submitted and reviewed in time for today's agenda took place before that. We did not have a quorum for the Oxnard Airport Authority Thursday night. And so for item 14, which is the extension of the Small Community or Service Development Grant, there was discussion with the members that were present and further discussion with one of the members that was not present. And basically, we told them that we would still bring the action forward to your board and then report back to the authority at their next meeting. It's merely an extension of our ability to access the grant funds for one more year. It's not signing any agreement with the airline or anything like that at this time. And then on item 12, that is a budget adjustment, and the budget adjustment's for all Camarillo Airport items. And so the Oxnard Airport Authority was not required as part of that approval process, although it was on the letter. So we just wanted to correct the record on that one. Available to answer any questions.
I'm sure just, I was there on behalf of the Oxnard Authority and of course, in Camarillo, but we did not have a quorum, you know, for the Oxnard Authority. But I just want to thank Mr. Rubio and Todd, you know, for the continuing process to hopefully get an airline over for Oxnard. That'll help us tremendously. I know that, I think Mr. Rubio and Todd mentioned that we have, what, about 800 and plus trips, shuttle trips from Oxnard to LAX. And by hopefully maybe get an airline from Oxnard to LAX, that'll help us with the transportation of our residents from Oxnard to LAX. But I think it's a good program. We'll continue looking into getting an airline into Oxnard. And of course, Oxnard wasn't there to do so. But with their concurrence, I think, contacted one of the Oxnard members and they're okay with it.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, or a motion?
Move approval. Do we take 12 and 14 or just 12? One at a time? Okay.
And also, I believe it was in that one too, where we have the Horizon View. You were to assist with the demolition, I believe. And so this is just carrying that on because that got a little delayed too, correct?
Correct. So what happened is we had these three projects budgeted for last fiscal year. We didn't carry over those appropriations and now we're accomplishing those projects this fiscal year. So it's the budgetary estimate.
And the funds are there already. So that's certainly, that then is approved. And we'll go to the next item, also 14.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Great. So you won't have to watch government action too much at the board. We'll go on to our item 31. And again, that's with the Healthcare Agency.
Morning Supervisor, Chair Parks, members of the board, and CEO Powers. This morning, I'm here to request that, the Director of the Agency, by the way, Johnson Gill, HCA Director. So I'm requesting the authorization to complete and submit to the state medical applications related to the dental program that we're trying to initiate. So I'm requesting that I'm allowed to, I'm sorry, allowed to submit that application on behalf of the county that would qualify us to be the dental provider. That is what my request is.
And we're looking at, as we've seen, working with our community partners, the Simi Valley Free Clinic is one of those partners. So it would be able to, by using already partners out there that want to provide those services and having the funding to do that, that would be great to step into that role. Because as we know, it is very lacking here.
Absolutely. So this is the first step, actually. It's a prerequisite to starting our dental transformation initiative. So by doing this, that would give us the opportunity to expand and grow our program.
Exciting. So with that, we have the motion before us to authorize the application.
Really appreciate your leadership on this movement on dental. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to say too, that dental program is extremely important because there's so many children without dental care that this is really going to help.
Yeah, there are about 122,000 kids that qualify under the dental program. And our goal is, of course, to ramp up the program over a few years.
Very, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to add that earlier, the public comments that were made, we take them seriously. I will be looking into both of those situations, providing a summary to Chairman, sorry, CEO Powers, to share with the board of what the actions were taken by the agency. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have 32 listed next, but we have a closed session first to discuss a settlement. So we won't go to that one quite yet. That would then get us to our correspondence agenda, correct? And that's item 38. And it is a receive and file on the Ventura County Law Library Annual Report. Motion is second. If we could please vote. And that passes. And I believe that we have some time before our first time certen, which is at 10 o'clock. So we can go into closed session now from 9:35 to 10. And we'll do that now. Left from our regular agenda, which is item 32 with the Healthcare Agency. And we have a presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers. For the record, my name is Catherine Rodriguez from CEO's office. The item before you today is a recommendation for your board to authorize the county executive officer or designate me to execute the terms of the settlement agreement between Winthrop Resource Corporation and the County of Ventura. The recommendations are listed in the board letters. There are four items in there. As a background, in 2008, Ventura County Medical Center and Winthrop Resource Corporation entered into an agreement to where it would provide a lease agreement to Ventura County Medical Center for the PACS machine, which is a picture archiving computerized system to save costs for X-ray films and costs of processing and an instant access for the providers to access the images from the X-rays. In, the dispute stems from the timing of the, or start of the lease agreement. And Winthrop Resources has claimed that the term of the agreement has started on a later date. They, Winthrop Resources filed a claim against Ventura County Medical Center and filed it with the federal district court. And around springtime, we have gone twice with county counsel Rhonda McAig and the former director, bureau official, and yours truly, and come into a settlement agreement pending your board approval today that consists of three primary elements. One of those elements is the $475,000 value, 1% five-year term that would transfer the title for the PACS machine that is currently being used now. And the second element is for a lease option that would finance, or I'm sorry, that would provide a lease agreement between county and Winthrop for $9.9 million for equipment needs for the hospital replacement wing, such as the DaVinci robotic surgical machine designed to provide a better outcome in surgical services that are qualified to be done in that machine. And secondly is for the equipment, for the furniture and furnitures, and IT for their hospital replacement wing, and Santa Paula Hospital chiller, and mobile mammography, which is needed in the county. And the term for that is five years. That's $9.9 million. And it's, the interest rate is at 2.52% with a fair market value option at the end of the lease. And the third one is the equipment lease option wherein Winthrop has the right of first refusal, an option to enter into a future lease during a two-year period to where there's $5 million at 10-year national treasury rate, which is approximately 1.75%. And that is an option that would be taken by the county if they so need that lease agreement. And finally, also in addition, additional machine that was actually being leased with Winthrop is the tattoo removal machine. The release of the title is going to be granted in this settlement. With that, I'm ready to answer any of your questions. But before that, I'd like to first thank the legal counsel, Rhonda McAig, was very, very good instrumental in this settlement, and the auditor controllers for their diligence with the lease agreement terms, and of course, our CEO Powers for providing us their guidance.
Thank you for the report. And CEO Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. So the lease term, the interest rates are very favorable compared to market?
That's correct. Have we not entered into this agreement that we would then, because of the finance, the cash flow needs of the hospital right now, we would have RFP the process? And the interest rate from the past, you know, lease agreement that we had is Phillips, one of that is 3.18%. And this rate is about 2.52%. So it's pretty much lesser than the other rates. And if we, you know, put it in the market again, it will probably be higher with the talks right there right now about the federal policy going to another whatever point in December. So it would be tight for us to open this once again.
So really, this is restructuring a longer-term business deal on favorable terms.
That's correct. We are entering into a long-term business deal with Winthrop that would allow us some savings as well in terms of the lease interest rates.
Thank you. And we do appreciate county council and auditor helping on this complex situation, as well as your leadership and understanding these complex financing arrangements. So thank you.
Any questions, comments from the Board of Supervisors? Okay. And I know we have been briefed on this, so I think we've got our questions answered.
Those are recommended back.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And now, let's get to our 10:00 AM time certens. And the first 10:00 AM time certain is with our California Flood Preparedness Week. Mr. Shady is here, and I believe you have a PowerPoint for us too.
I do have a PowerPoint. It's not long, so I won't extend your morning too long. Good morning, Chair Parks, Board of Supervisors, CEO Powers. For the record, my name's Peter Shady. I am the interim director for the Ventura County Water Sheriff Protection District. Today, I'm before you to discuss this year's Flood Preparedness Week. I am joined by a few staff, Sergio Vargas, our deputy director of our planning and regulatory division, Jeff Pratt, of course, our agency director, Karen Mendoza, who helps with displays that we'll have in the atrium next week. So next week is the actual Flood Preparedness Week. And our theme this year is be aware, be prepared, and take action. So even though we are experiencing one of the worst droughts in recent history, we cannot let our guard down. History teaches us that floods can happen in any year. And as you can see from this graphic, floods occur directly right after severe droughts. So we do have a history of having droughts and then floods. You may have heard last week that the National Weather Service released a forecast that said that we'll have a 70% chance of La Niña this fall, followed by a 55% chance of La Niña during this winter. I was at a recent roundtable meeting where the National Weather Service indicated that we have equal chances of below-average and above-average rainfall forecasts for this winter. So.
We'll plan accordingly.
That's right. So with that said, floods can happen again in any year and they can certainly happen in drought years. It just takes a few large storms clustered together to wet the ground and then cause some significant runoff. So again, the message is we can't let down our guard. So here's a slide that shows our alert system graphic interface that can be seen by, of course, all of you and the public on the district's website shown at the bottom of the slide. The link, we have the stream gauges on the left and you can see what flow we have in our various watercourses. And then on the right, the rain gauges. And then on the right, the rain gauges, get an idea of how much rain we've had, and you can vary that depending if you want to see the last eight, twenty-four, forty, forty-eight, or even a whole week rainfall. So here's information on our local flood information website. We can learn about flood risks, flood insurance, and links to other emergency information. And here's the screenshot of Department of Homeland Security's ready.org, ready.gov website, where you can learn how to prepare and safeguard your family and your property before, during, and after floods. Moving to our facilities, here are a few examples of district debris basins that our ONM division maintains to ensure they are in condition and have capacity to, to catch debris that would, would flow down from our natural watercourses before going into our urban areas. Tomorrow, we'll be having our annual storm day. It'll be a storm day that will be Public Works Agency-centric, and so will be represented by all the departments within Public Works. We'll have staff working here in the Hall Administration, at our Agency Operations Center down the hall, as well as in our two operation yards and the field. So as well as practicing our communication procedures, we'll all be practicing our field activities. And one example that is deploying stop logs where we have engineered gaps within our levees that need to be protected during floods. So the take-home message for the community is turn around, don't drown. Just this last week, twenty-five people in North Carolina died because of the Hurricane Matthew storms, and almost all of them were in vehicle-related deaths. So it's something that we need to continue to communicate. Don't drive through puddled water.
Oh, I thought when you said, you know, turn around, don't drown, is if you're in a flood, you should like face the water and say, no, this is just don't, don't drive your car into it. Okay, I thought I was learning a whole new survival technique, too.
That's a good technique of the ocean, though.
Yes.
So and then lastly, if you're in a flood emergency, call nine-one. Don't call the Water Sheriff Protection District. They'll come and, and address the issues that you have. And finally, be aware, be prepared, and take action. And that's all I have.
You know, the Watershed Protection District has a wonderful website where you can go on when it starts raining, and if you're concerned about flooding, and you can actually go and see the creeks and how much water is in them real time, right?
Yeah, we've got three, three or four locations, I think, right now. A couple, a couple in Senior Valley, I know. And yeah, you can see they refresh every couple of minutes, and you can see what the flow looks like.
Something to do when it's raining and you're concerned. Should you get the sandbags out? You can see how much water is coming into that watershed. Well, thank you for the presentation very much, and I know we have a resolution here. I was said, told that it wasn't necessary to read it all, so I'll, I'll save everyone that, and then come on down and hand it over to you.
Thank you.
And I know, obviously, this is for Watershed Protection District, but we also have some on our fire website, really good information about preparing for flooding before it occurs. So we'll see what the weather brings, you never know. As our Director of Public Works says, our watersheds and during the rain are becoming more flashy.
They are.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next agenda item, we have is twenty-eight, is that correct? And this is with Patty, are you here? Yeah. Hi, there you are. Patty is with the County of Ventura's Deferred Compensation Program Manager, and we are, as the Board of Supervisors, we are actually honoring Retirement Security Week, and that's October sixteenth to the twenty-second. So I'll read some whereas' and turn it over to you.
Perfect, thank you.
So whereas the week of October sixteenth has been designated National Retirement Security Week by the United States Senate, and whereas people in the United States are living longer, the cost of retirement is increasingly significant. Social Security remains the bedrock of retirement income for the great majority of people in the United States, but it was never intended by Congress to be the sole source of retirement income for families. And whereas recent data from the Employee Benefit Research Institute indicates that the United States only two-thirds of the workforce, workers, or their spouses actually, are saving for retirement. Two-thirds, aren't? That's incredible. That amount of workers have, I have to look at this again, excuse me. I always say, only approximately two-thirds of workers or their spouses are saving for retirement, so one-third is not. But those that are, have saved for retirement, the amount they've saved is actually much less than the amount that they need. And whereas saving for retirement is a key component of overall financial health and security during retirement years, and the importance of financial literacy in planning for retirement must really be advocated. And whereas many employees may not be aware of their retirement saving options, or may not have focused on the importance of it and need for it, and often those are the youngsters, right? And whereas although many employees have access through their employers to defined benefit and defined contribution plans to assist in preparing for retirement, many employees may not be taking advantage of those plans at all, or to the full extent allowed by federal law. And whereas saving for retirement is necessary even during economic downturns or market declines, which makes continued contributions all the more important. And whereas the county supports the goals and ideals of the National Retirement Security Week, indicating and including raising the public awareness about the importance of saving adequately for retirement and the availability of employer-sponsored retirement plans, and has long sponsored the County of Ventura 401K Shared Savings Plan and the County of Ventura County Section 457 Plan as tax-advantaged retirement savings vehicles to assist employees in saving for retirement. And so now, as Supervisor Long smiles, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims October sixteenth through twenty-second Retirement Security Week in Ventura County, and encourages all employees and residents of Ventura County to increase their retirement savings, become more literate in the financial retirement systems. So thank you very much. And if you'd like to go ahead and give us some words.
Words of wisdom. Thank you so much, Chair Parks, members of the Board, CEO Powers, Patty Doughty, CEO's office. As Supervisor Parks put it perfectly, that Congress recognizes this week, it's so important to get Americans to save more. They have endorsed a full week to get employers out, to encourage employees to save more for their retirement. And in order to, to save more towards a secure retirement, employees may need help, we recognize, with other financial aspects of their lives. They may struggle to balance competing priorities. With this in mind, our Retirement Security Week campaign is putting the pieces together for a financially secure future. That's why you all got your little puzzle piece, is for the stress, for your stress reliever. We also have banners up in the, in the Hall of Administration, courtesy of our graphics department, did a really good job on those. And for our campaign educational outreach, you can throw them at each other later, our educational outreach, we have actually joined forces with our CEO HR benefits team, and we are holding a health and financial wellness fair right out in the courtyard between the Hall of Administration and the Hall of Justice from ten to one today. And we are joining forces with our health plan benefits, employee assistance program, wellness program. We have twenty-eight vendors in total outside that are, we're doing financial, physical, emotional, and health plan information, putting all the pieces together. So again, we have representatives from the county benefit staff, all the healthcare plans. We have VCHP, Anthem, MetLife Dental, MES Vision, that are providing information on the upcoming changes to the healthcare plans. The DC program, deferred compensation, will absolutely be out there promoting, enrolling, increasing those contributions, the goal of this week. Wellness program will be leading a walk at noon to kick off the next interdepartmental well-track challenge, Walk the Parks, hopefully Parks, Supervisor Parks, you can come out, Walk the Parks of Parks. The healthcare agency has the mobile clinic providing flea, free flu shots and screenings, and the Ventura County Animal Services is also out there. AAA is doing a Tai Chi demo, and a Living Within Your Means presentation for us, and libraries, corporate games, we have, we have it all going on. So hopefully, again, ten to one, going on between the courtyard, we're all joining forces to really work on the benefit, the wellness of our entire, the whole play, so, which will lead to secure retirement.
That does like cover everything.
Covering the whole person.
All the way down to the pets. And I hear, you know, if you have a dog, you live longer, right?
There you go.
So there's tattoos and stress relief.
What's better stress relief? A pet and a pet.
Well, thank you so much. There is certainly, with the new changes in the healthcare plan, it's great the employees will be able to get good information, and it's available and accessible, so good things to learn. We have to remember, even those who are young, you need to start saving for retirement. Says Social Security wasn't meant to take care of everything for you. Cost of living increases, and sometimes those retirement benefits don't, so.
And just fill the gap.
That's right. Well, thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Welcome to Retirement Security Week.
That's right. Well, I do want to thank Patty for her leadership. She really has passion and champions this cause for retirement preparedness, and, and it shows, I think the last program was an award-winning program as well, too. So, and this little stress piece does work. Thank you.
And our, our final, then, ten AM time certain is with our Auditor Controller.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Jill Ward with the Auditor Controller's office. I am here today to ask that you receive the information on Exhibits one, two, three, and four regarding the developer fees for Ventura County. The information was compiled by our office based on information provided by the departments that administer these funds. We will ask that your Board complete the review at a future meeting, which is currently scheduled for November eighth, and we're available to answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment. When you look at Exhibit four, and it looks at the update of net project cost for transportation projects, there are at least eight of those on there that are county obligations. And just to say that if we had some leveraged funds, as in sales tax dollars, we'd be able to get those completed quicker and sooner and stronger, and that's my comment.
Thank you, and it also brings to attention that every time we have this, we keep saying Wendy Road should not be on there, Wendy Drive should not be on that list, and we had asked that at least get a, an asterisk, that we, the county has no plans to restripe it from two to four lanes. And I understand it's still part of the circulation element, it's still part of the general plan, and that's why it's on here, but we have already voted and made our expressions clear that that is not the intent of the county. And I know we are revising, updating our general plan, so eventually that will get off, but an asterisk would be helpful to at least point that out. I realize that's not your department, with the Roads Department, that would be helpful if, if they're listening. And it was also nice to see on this list that we are moving forward with the funds from Thousand Oaks and getting the fire station built there, which we will all be cutting the ribbon on, well, maybe not all of us, in April twenty-seventeen, I believe. So we have a motion to receive and file. Thank you. And that passes. Thank you very much.
I'm sure glad Jeff said somebody really understands that down there.
And now, we will, speaking of a lot of work going into things, we have item thirty on our agenda now. This is a ten-thirty time certain regarding benzene injection wells and drinking water. And Mr. Stevens, I know that your department has done some extensive work on this, and we welcome the report, as well as input from the public.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. For the record, I am Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency. And as was just mentioned, the Board has previously received two reports related to benzene and oil production wastewater and its impacts on drinking water aquifers. Following our last report, the Board requested some additional information specifically related to injection wells within five hundred feet of drinking water aquifers, as well as a further discussion of drinking water regulations and what options there might be for the county to revise its monitoring and testing requirements for those drinking water wells. So that is the subject of our report to you today. I will present a summary of the injection well-related information, and then I've asked Bill Stratton to, he'll come up and present to you the information related to the drinking water regulations and the options that we see available to the Board to revise our monitoring and, and testing requirements. Before I dive into the report, I wanted to point out that a revised Exhibit two has been provided to the Board this morning. The revision, it's important to point out, the revision doesn't change any of the data in the table. What we found was that when the rather large, as you can tell, Excel spreadsheet was converted into a PDF format for posting on the county's webpage, there were formatting errors, so we wanted to correct those for you. And the revised Exhibit two that you have now includes the two new left-hand columns that had, were inadvertently cut off, so you have information related to the operator, as well as the oil field location of those wells. Also inadvertently, what was put on the previous Exhibit two was a footnote that does not apply to the data in the table, so that footnote was removed. So they were really formatting corrections to the table, and I wanted to make sure I pointed those out to you this morning. I'll now briefly walk you through the, the injection well data that we've provided, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Stratton. In order to determine whether, which wells there were that, that were within a five-hundred-foot distance of drinking water aquifers, we relied on data provided to us by the Division of Oil and Gas, DOGger, as it's commonly referred to, as well as data that we receive from our Water Resources section within our Public Works Agency. So the data you see in the table is entirely from those two, two entities. The table includes a lot of data, as you can see there. What I wanted to do was kind of highlight two columns in particular that I think are most relevant to the discussion today. First, the, the, the order that you see in the table is based on the distance between what they refer to as the top perforation, that is the, the, the top of the oil-bearing formation, the distance between the top of that to the bottom of the, the drinking water aquifer, or the formation where there is drinking water. And so that is the distance that, that we're looking at. That is the, the third column from the right, as you can see, given the, the order that we've put this in, so highlighted on top there are those, those injection wells that are within that five-hundred-foot distance. I want to point out, there were, in a few, just a handful of instances, I think perhaps maybe five or six, the data that the county had in its databases differed slightly with that, that DOGger had in its databases. So what we did for the purposes of this table was we picked the value that was most conservative, so it created the closer distance between the water. We wanted to err on the side of caution. So where there was a difference, and it was only in a handful of locations, and they were not generally significant, but where there was, we took the value that created a closer distance. I just wanted to make sure we kind of pointed that out for the Board. Second, the, the second thing I wanted to point out was the column that is labeled groundwater basin, and you'll see two types of entries in that column. In some cases, you'll see the name of the groundwater basin itself, such as Oxnard Plain, or Lower Ventura River, or Santa Paula. Those are designated groundwater basins from the Public Works Agency Water Resources Division. In, in, in other locations, you'll simply see the word "no," and that is a reference to the fact that there is no designated groundwater basin in the area where that well is located. You'll see, where, where you see that "no," sometimes you'll see it red highlighted. Where you see that highlight, what that means is, is that while there is no groundwater basin designated for that area, there are drinking water wells in the area, there is well data available, and we used the depth of those wells to identify a depth difference between the injection well and- difference between the injection well and groundwater. So while it's not a designated groundwater basin, there is drinking water identified in the area, and we wanted to make sure we identified that location. In others, you will see the "no" is not highlighted in red, and in those locations, not only is it outside of a groundwater basin, there are no drinking water wells in the area, and so there is nothing for us to measure against in terms of a depth to groundwater. So in those locations where you see the distance column, you will see an "NA," meaning it's not applicable, there is simply no distance for us to identify.
So when it's highlighted in red, just want you to review what you said about the difference in the distance between the groundwater basin.
Okay.
The depth.
Correct. The, what, the, those that are saying "no" that are highlighted in red means they are not within a designated groundwater basin, but there are wells in the area, and there are depths available through those well permits for us to identify. So there is a, there is known drinking water in the area, and so we've used that to identify the distance between the injection well and drinking water. So it's not, it's not a designated groundwater basin.
The horizontal distance between the?
The, no, the, the, the vertical distance, so.
The vertical distance between?
Correct. Got it. Okay. So, just wanted to kind of paint that picture of the data that you have in front of you. So, we did not, the point being that we did not strictly look at designated groundwater basins. We looked at all the wells data that we had available, where there is drinking water, because that, of course, is important, even if it's not within that designated basin. So, we wanted to take the complete picture. So, kind of with that as background, we, we identified four, if you can see here, four locations that were within the vertical distance, within five hundred feet of the top of the injection well and the, and the, the base of the fresh water, as we refer to it. Wanted to, we have on this, this map here, this up for the board, you see the, the, it identifies, the red dots are all of the injection wells. This is a map that you've seen previously. What we've highlighted here now, that there's some additional information about state small water systems, and, and we'll let Bill Stratton talk about those when he comes up here. But what we've highlighted here in yellow are the locations of the four wells that are within five hundred feet. I'll quickly give you the information that we've gathered from DOGger on those. I'll talk, this first one over here is referred to as the Oak Park Two well, I believe. That is what DOGger would describe as a typical injection well. In that location, produced water that is, that is generated from adjacent oil-producing wells is injected back into the same oil-bearing formation. And that well is, is, here is not within any designated groundwater basin. The other one I wanted to highlight here, a second well, is here on the Oxnard Plain, and the table is identified as Vaca Transamerica 216. It is a, what they refer to as a cyclic steam well. That is a well where they do not inject produced water. They inject steam into the oil-bearing formation, in essence, to reduce the viscosity of the oil so that it is easier for the production company to, to bring to the surface. So it is not, it is not what you might call a typical injection well. It is used for the purpose of generating better production out of adjacent producing wells.
Chris has said within the five hundred feet?
Yes, yes, that is within five hundred feet on the table here, I believe.
And where exactly is that?
That is right here.
Which is what, Wendy Road, or? Okay.
Okay. The, another interesting point about that well, it was, it is not currently operating. It was recently, the terminology that they use is shut-in, so it has been, at this point, disconnected and is no longer in use. It can be restarted. They would, the operator would have to submit paperwork to DOGger to do so, but currently it is not being used.
That's in, East Oxnard?
That's, yes, East Oxnard Plain.
Okay.
The final two wells are here up in the upper Ojai Valley. These are a starter wells. They are what, they are rather unusual. They are called gravity drainage wells, and these are old wells that the, the injection of the produced water is done without pressure. They, it is simply gravity-fed into those two wells. As noted in the comments submitted by Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas, I believe they commented that those type of wells would not be permitted today. That, that is the case. I've checked with, with the DOGger staff as well. They have been, they are regularly monitored and apparently have shown no indications of failure, and therefore they have been allowed to continue to operate as they have for many years. But it is true that such a, such a, a well would not be, be permitted today.
So these are, I think, were done in the eighteen hundreds, and they don't have casing on some of those that you're talking about right now? And I just wondered?
And, and, and I, there are representatives of DOGger here. I would refer that question to them as to the details of what is in the well or not. But they certainly are not, as I understand it, to today's, today's standards is what we would require for a well.
Okay.
But there are, and there are water wells next to it, and, and are you in agreement that those water wells have been tested and have contaminants in them?
We, the, I, I was just going to mention, those, these are, these are in the same area as the Ojai Oil Company wells that were referred to in the SeaFrog comments. Our Environmental Health Division staff has been trying to reach the Regional Water Quality Control Board staff to talk to them about that. They are in that area, and we want to get, we're trying to gather more information about those wells. I, I think the, the SeaFrog comments really do a good job of illustrating the authority for this rest with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They actually have the authority to demand test results, something that we don't have the authority to do. We're going to track that very closely with them. We want to see what's going on with those results. And if there is anything that the regional board, when they're through with their analysis, identifies that we can do here at the local level, we intend to bring a full report back to the board with your options and the directions that are provided by the regional board. But, but at this point, we haven't been able to have much of a discussion with them, and we don't have the results of their analysis, other than those that have been provided in the comment letter. So that, that, I think, highlights the injection well information that we gathered for those within five hundred feet. And if there aren't any questions for me at this time, I'll, I'll ask Bill Stratton to come up and talk to you about the drinking water regulations.
Good morning, Bill Stratton, Environmental Health Division. One of the items, one of the requests that your board made in August of 2015 was to have a discussion about drinking water regulations and options available to the county for greater monitoring and testing of benzene in drinking water supplies. The discussion actually starts on page two in your board letter. But what I've attempted to do here is, is kind of summarize that discussion in this chart. And it's, it's broken down into water system categories, and it also describes the water quality monitoring requirements. And briefly, if you look at that left-hand column, individual water systems, state small water systems, and public water systems, those all refer to the number of service connections and the number of people that those water companies provide water to. In terms of regulatory oversight by the county, I want to focus on the first two, individual water system and the state small water systems. The third one, the public water system, is permitted by the State Water Resources Control Board, and through the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board. So the county really has very little oversight over those water systems. The first two systems, however, the individual water system, the Environmental Health Division issues a water supply certificate to the property owner when prior tuitions of building permits. So we're looking at those primary drinking water standards for an individual well. Now, this well can serve up to four service connections, so a primary house and perhaps a secondary, and maybe your neighbor's house as well, and then a number of people. The state small system, those are twenty-six water companies, water systems that, that are regulated and permitted by the county Ventura through the Environmental Health Division. Those systems, as you can see, serve between five and fourteen service connections. As you can see, the, the, the water quality standards are broken down into two parts. There's primary drinking water standards, and there are secondary drinking water standards. As you can see from the chart, for an individual system, we're looking at bacteria, we're looking at inorganic chemicals, and we're looking at radiological results. There are no requirements for VOCs or the organic compounds, specifically benzene, for those individual systems. For the state small systems, again, we have the primary standards, and those are health-based standards. Secondary standards are the consumer, how well the consumer will take to the water, for example, odor taste and, and color. And those standards, if you look on the right-hand column, the organic chemical analysis are required one time when they come in and, and get a permit for that system. And then you can see in the, in the column to the left, the inorganic chemicals are, are every three years.
So, individual water systems, what is the definition of that? Just, it's somebody's well that their three or four homes are sharing? Is that?
Correct. That's how we, that's how we view that. These are individual water supply systems. They serve no more, no more than four service connections, and you can see the number of people there. So typically, if you have, for example, the subdivision, the four-lot subdivision, you may have a shared well, and we look at that as an individual supply.
And there's no requirement to test that for, like, the same contaminants that you would with a public water system, benzene or any of that? There's no requirement to test that?
That's correct. For the, for the state small systems and the large water systems, California Code of Regulations requires that these certain constituents and contaminants be tested. For individual supplies, the plumbing code just says you need to provide a potable water supply. So, most jurisdictions have taken that to look at those primary drinking water standards, specifically for bacteria in the inorganic chemicals.
It's, it's interesting, when you think about, like, the FDA and how much effort they go through to make sure that the food that you have is safe, even if it's just to the individual, that there isn't any government agency looking out for and making sure that the well, that, that's up to the individual property owner, making sure their wells don't have contaminants, then, other than the ones mentioned here, primary standards? Okay.
And, and that's true, and, and that's a good point, because anybody who owns an individual well, or anybody even in a residential that receives water from a public water system, you can collect a sample, or you can have a company come out and collect a sample, and have that sample analyzed for whatever constituent you'd like it tested for. But you're right, for individual water supply systems, it is up to the, the well owner.
You're on your own.
I have one of those myself. I place in the mountains, and every couple of years, we just get it tested because we're an individual well owner.
Good idea.
Yeah, yeah. You always want to know.
So, one of the directions that we, your board asked us to look at were options available. As I mentioned, in terms of the regulatory oversight for these systems, the county really has control over the first and second, the individual water system and the state small systems. The options that we've identified, and those are listed on page five of, of your board letter, the first one is to provide a, provide a fact sheet, and that would be provided to applicants for individual water supply systems. And this fact sheet would, would discuss benzene contamination and various information about that. The second option has to do with prepare and recommend, but not required, a trust, a test protocol for testing for these benzene concentrations. And that could be applied to both the individual water system as well as the state small water system. The third option that we identified was to develop a database available to the public by either Environmental Health Division webpage, or, for example, the Public Works Agency webpage, with all of the well test data that's available, and make that available to the public. And the fourth option that we identified would be to adopt an ordinance that would, that would increase the monitoring requirements for both the individual water supply systems and the state water systems. Again, the county would have authority to do that. We can increase those sampling frequencies, or we could require that applicants for individual water system certifications test their wells for benzene concentrations.
Madam Chair, Bill. On, on option one, the fact sheet, is that, they asked for it, the, the, the provider of the, of the well, or do we just give it to them, or?
Well, we had, and we, we process perhaps about half a dozen, two dozen perhaps, of, of these every year. And we would hand that out at the same time that we issue their water supply certificate. Now, our database shows we've, since the mid nineties, we've probably issued four hundred of these water supply certificates for these individual systems. Public Works Agency, I received information from them yesterday that they have in their database about fifteen hundred drinking water wells, that they've, that they've issued a permit to drill those wells. The caveat to that is, in their database, they can only identify either a, a drinking water or ag well. So if the applicant checked off drinking water, they may be using it as an ag well, but it is identified as a drinking water well. So, our records show four hundred, but the county has, in their, in their records, about fifteen hundred.
And that gives them the fact sheets and, and the standards for checking benzene, or?
Well, the fact sheet under option number one would be to identify.
Identify.
That information, and option number one talks about just providing that to new applicants for these, for these systems.
Not for the, okay.
Not for existing. That's correct.
Okay.
I, I would mention that, I want to mention with those state small water systems, we have about twenty-six of those systems in the county. Six of those systems are what we call a metered system, so they obtain their water from a large municipal water company, for example, Cuyahoga, City of Ventura. So the, the company that provides the water to them is then responsible for doing those organic sampling, providing those results. We do require them to submit back tea and nitrates. Those contaminants can, can be introduced as part of the distribution systems, the storage in their, in their distribution system. Of those, of the twenty-six, the six remetered systems, we've got about fourteen, when they did the initial tests to obtain their permit, they were non-detect for, for benzene. And of the six remaining, three didn't test for benzene, but they did test for MTBEs, that was back in the nineties, and those were all non-detect. And then we have, for some reason, in our files, the three remaining sites, we just don't have any information as to the, the sampling analysis for benzene. So with that, that concludes my comments. I do want to point out that in your board packet, under Exhibit number three, is a, quite an extensive list of the constituents that are included in the primary drinking water standards, as well as the secondary standards, and what those levels look like.
We have several cards. Does the board have any questions at this point, or we'll just go to the public? Supervisor Long?
Yes, I do. Sorry, oh, this is for Chris. I didn't ask at the time he was up. I'm sorry. Can you, Chris, talk a little bit more about, do we know how many injection wells have received an aquifer exemption in Ventura County?
According to the information that we received, since the process was started, and it's now maybe close to two years ago, there have been none granted.
Okay.
And, and I'll add, because it is mentioned in that letter, according to the information we've received, there have also been no permits to do hydraulic fracturing since the new regulations went in place now, a little over two years ago.
Okay. Another question. What, what is the history of the board's direction behind establishing a threshold of five hundred feet or less difference of depth of drinking water in injection well to be analyzed, when some other jurisdictions, it's other jurisdictions, it's down in miles? Do you recall?
That came up at the last presentation to the board. That was the distance identified by the board that you asked us to look at. Yeah, there's not, there's no, to my knowledge, industry standard, nor any, did we provide any analysis, or, you know, I'll say, scientific information to support that. That was just direction from the board.
Thank you.
So, we have, as you pointed out, we've received a letter from Citizens for Responsible Oil and Gas. We're going to have some testimony from them. After their testimony, and I know you've digested the letter, I'd like to have you be prepared to come up and tell us what you think of their recommendations and their request. Okay? Thank you.
And just another, we had a comment card up here talking about the quality of water that's used in irrigation for agricultural uses, and whether, how that varies from the standards that are in place for looking at the well water, concerns of, you know, the plants taking in the contaminants. Is there something that reviews that?
I don't know. I'll defer to Mr. Stratton on that, and so I don't have that information available at this time.
But we have lower standards for irrigation water than we do for drinking water?
Yeah, I believe we have higher standards for the water that we drink than that that we place on our irrigation.
Right, right. So then it's just a matter of knowing what it is in the irrigation water that's allowed?
Right.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead now to the questions, or I'm sorry, to the comments from the public. Bob Poole is with the WISPA, Western State Petroleum Association, followed by Gary Cushing with the Chamber of Commerce.
Madam Chair, for the record, before the public comments start?
Yes, and we'll have three minutes for the public comment. You have a question for the record?
No, I do not. Are there additional documents submitted by SeaFrog this morning that have been loaded on your terminals? If you access the documents, they were voluminous to print, and so they came in this morning.
Okay, so we have additional documents from SeaFrog. Are they also ones that we received? We didn't get them as in our packet yet.
No, they were submitted this morning.
It was this morning, okay.
Yes, so they're loaded on the terminals for you.
And they are available on our screens?
Yes, they start with...
Exhibit number...
They're below the PowerPoint, if you see the documents listed. It starts with final SeaFrog report, and final Newton tech memo, and then attachments to ECD, and then 130.
Madam Chair, it's all received.
Okay. Thank you. On to WISPA.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, CEO Powers. My name is Bob Poole with the Western States Petroleum Association, and I'll point out that I'm also a Ventura County resident. Let me begin by saying, simply stated, the issue before you today is not an issue. There's clearly no cause for concern, as others continue to assert. What has really caused for concern is that in light of the extensive and thorough review and analysis put forth by your staff, both in 2015 and before you today, showing no evidence of groundwater contamination from benzene or any other volatile organic compounds, there still persists an ongoing attempt to create fear in the public that our domestic production of the energy we all depend on every day in every area of our life is polluting our drinking water. The real facts simply don't bear this out. Once again, local, state, and federal government has been shown to be doing just what government is supposed to do, protect our health and safety. Again, I urge you to do the responsible thing when you, and to encourage the production of our own domestic energy, and thereby help reduce our dependence on importing foreign oil from far away over the ocean, a million barrels a day into California, as I've said to you before. As was in the case in 2015, the information before you clearly shows the proper regulatory, operational, and monitoring safeguards are in place and working. Further, in closing, I want to provide each of you, I know Supervisor Long, you mentioned about aquifer exemptions, and there is an ongoing process revealing those at the state and the federal level. Those are EPA underground injection control programs that are delegated to the state, the Water Board, and DOGger. And I have an informational sheet for you that enhances that information. Thank you.
And I note that you are opposed. Would that be opposed to what? Any recommendations?
Well, I think some of the recommendations are to provide information on fact testing. We're always open to providing more information. It's a matter of the, of the 631 wells, I believe there were four focused on, none of which, was there any problem here? So I'm just wondering how far we carry this issue out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, opposed to additional study? Would that be it? Oh, how much you get carried out? Okay. Gary Cushing?
Yes.
And you're in support?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and CEO Mike Powers. My name is Gary Cushing, the CEO of the Canadian Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to show support for the staff report that continues to show that there hasn't been any contamination with the water supply, and there are safeguards in place to continue the operation of oil production in Ventura County. I urge you to continue to allow production of oil in Ventura County, an industry that is a major employer in Ventura County and a major asset to our community. And Kathy, I appreciate your comments about the transportation. Thank you.
All right. Now we follow with John Brooks with SeaFrog, with some new information, and then Carol Hawley.
Yes, hello, and good morning, Chair Parks and members of the board. I am John Brooks. I live in Oakview. A year ago, SeaFrog stood before you and warned that benzene and other dangerous chemicals could be in drinking water wells as a result of oil and gas activity, and we told you that individual wells were not being tested for it. I took some grief from Supervisor Bennett over that, but I still stand by that remark today. They're still not being tested for it, as you heard from your own staff. We thank you for directing staff to do further study, and today you can approve some first steps that are part of the staff recommendation to protect the shrinking supply. But now, we have, and we've prepared and sent to you, new evidence that confirms the presence of toluene and high concentrations of inorganic compounds exceeding the maximum contaminant level for drinking water in some water wells. You have that before you. Our expert says, quote, "Based on these findings, there's cause for concern that oil and gas exploration and production activities have contaminated groundwater aquifers within the county of Ventura." Now, some of it appears linked to sumps, some of it to the use of a wastewater injection well. You may recall, a year ago, Bruce Hess and the DOGger told you there were no sumps in Ventura County. He was wrong. Your own staff member, Brian Baca, told you there's never been a verified incidence of contaminated water from oil and gas activities in Ventura County. Now he may be wrong. We applaud Director Stevens' proposed steps one through four, and they should all be approved, but that's not enough. You need to determine how many aquifers, small and large, and how many wells have been contaminated due to oil and gas production activities over the past century. The Regional Water Board has issued an investigative order to all oil operators that requested information on both historic and currently permitted sumps. The order also requires any water wells within a half mile of each sump to be tested for contamination. Unfortunately, most of the companies have yet to submit their data. Many sumps and wells are still under active investigation. SeaFrog brings to you a scientific report that provides an eye-opening snapshot summarizing just a small amount of the pollution information that's been posted, and there will be more. What's been confirmed is that two separate groundwater aquifers have suffered contamination. One appears to have been polluted directly from a sump. SeaFrog commissioned Dr. Brad Newton of Newton Geohydrology Services to verify that contamination did indeed take place. His report is in your hands. In the case of the Ojai Oil Company, the old sump has been removed and cleaned up. We know the chemicals breached the cement lining, leached into the soil, and likely contaminated the groundwater. Dr. Newton confirms the data that show organic compound toluene and high concentrations of organic inorganic compounds in the water. There's a similar confirmation in unincorporated oxanard. Mr. Zaragosa, tests near Antero Energy Services show polluted groundwater in proximity to the waste injection disposal operation. Your board voted to deny that zoning modification. You deserve commendation for that. Since you now know that sumps have the potential to contaminate our aquifers, who will regularly inspect them for integrity? The state doesn't do it. This is a county responsibility for individual and small water systems that's being neglected. The Environmental Health Division should be carrying out that activity, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Carol Hawley, followed by Kim Rivers.
I'd like to share with you my own experience, because I'm an individual well owner. I commend the staff for describing four options that would develop new programs or regulations for individual well-drinking water sources. Given the possibility we learned of today, of a greater groundwater contamination problem that had been previously considered, it is imperative that each individual well owner understand the quality of his water. My husband and I drilled a well in 2000 in Upper Ojai. Upon completion, the well driller submitted a water sample for testing at Fruit Growers' lab. We were delighted to learn that the water had passed, and the Department of Environmental Health had approved our well for our personal family use. Neither my husband nor I had taken a chemistry class since high school, and we had no idea that our well was in the middle of an historic oil production area and had not been tested for other organic compounds. I was horrified when I learned at the benzene hearing last year that we might be brushing our teeth with benzene, which is carcinogenic, or bathing in toluene, which affects the nervous system. Our well was tested after that for all organic chemicals for mere $340, which was pales in the light of the $25,000-plus that it cost us to develop the well. We were lucky. It is not contaminated. I feel passionately that all citizens living in Ventura County with their primary source of water coming from a personal well should be informed that, given the location of their home and land, their well water needs to be tested for all chemicals. Knowledge is power. There are filters that can solve just about any problem. We deserve to know if we need a certain type of filter. I strongly urge you to adopt a plan that protects the public health from all harmful organic chemicals and non-organic. For example, chromium 6 was just added to the list of primary drinking water contaminants. To limit your concerns to benzene seems unwise. The plan should include the following: a way to keep well owners up to date and informed, comprehensive testing, the development of a comprehensive database, and advice about monitoring ongoing of all small water systems or private water wells. If this drought lingers, wells throughout the county will be deepened, and groundwater reservoirs will be affected in unknown ways. It's time to act.
Thank you. And then Kim Rivers, followed by Ann Andryl.
I'm Kimberly Rivers, and I am the Executive Director of SeaFrog. Thank you, board, Mr. Powers, and staff for dealing with this very important issue. And I think it is a major issue, of course, our drinking water. I am also a resident of Ventura County where I raised my family. As John Brooks said, last year, SeaFrog was very happy that this report was going to be commissioned, and at that time, we reached out to staff to ask to be involved and collaborate with the staff in preparation of this report. Our intention was to make sure that you and the public had all the information from all sources, so that you would be fully informed about the state of our groundwater in the county and any potential or known risks and impacts from the oil and gas industry. Staff did indicate at that time, and in fact assured and promised SeaFrog that we would be a part of that process, that you would have had this information earlier to review, the staff would have been able to incorporate it into their final report. That didn't occur. We got the report late last week, the same, when it was added to the agenda, and so we've only had a few days to review it. In that short review time, we've noticed one issue. The three of the oil field waste injection wells that are listed in staff report exhibit two are labeled as having no base of fresh water. Those three wells are, in fact, under orders from the LA Regional Water Quality Control Board to be shut down on February 18, 2017. One of them is already shut down, and that's because, according to the Water Board, they are injecting into an aquifer with less than 10,000 parts per million of total dissolved solids, and that means they qualify as drinking water. I'm going to read the paragraph from the Water Board that's addressed to the operator. "In conclusion, the injection of produced water into wells Twilight 2, Red Rock 6729, Red Rock 6829, and Calpak 2531 has occurred within a non-exempted aquifer. The injection wells are not located within the current productive limit boundary of the SESPY oil field. While Twilight 2 was confirmed to be disconnected in September 2015 and is planned to be plugged and abandoned, Seneca should inform DOGger, the state Water Board, and the regional board if the status changes. Continued injection of produced waters could degrade the current injection zone aquifer for current or future beneficial uses. According to the DOGger Aquifer Exemption Compliance Schedule Regulations, quote, 'If the portion of the aquifer where injection is approved is a hydrocarbon-producing zone and the groundwater has less than 10,000 TDS, then injection shall cease by February 15, 2017, unless and until there is an aquifer exemption for the aquifer or the portion of the aquifer where injection is occurring.'" The fact is, we don't know today how many wastewater injection wells are going to come under these type of orders, and I know my time is up. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And our next speaker then is Ann Andryl.
Good morning, board and Madam Chair. I'm Ann Andryl, resident of Ventura, retired oil and gas supervisor with the Division of Oil and Gas, and a registered petroleum engineer in the state of California. I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about two of the wells that are of great concern in the Upper Ojai, and they are Astata Number 9 and Astata Number 13. These might be considered really historic wells that you might want to go see. One, the Astata 9, was drilled in 1889, and I think may well be the oldest active well in California that is taking water. It was inactive for many, many years because it was dry, but it was given a permit to gravity flow water into it in 1984, '85. I was looking for some indication of groundwaters and found no mud logs or history in the two well files for Astata Number 9 and 11. And the reason is, there are no histories. But there are some wells, you know, newer wells, one drilled in 1900 and one in 1910 that show a freshwater zone was penetrated around 117 or so feet. The other one, 125 feet below ground level. And this, these are fairly close to the same elevation as the two Astata wells, and within about a half mile of them. The data sheets that were used when the aquifer exemptions were given to all the oil fields in California back around 1981 would normally make the sogus zone where the water is being injected an exempt, I should say, yeah, an exempt aquifer. It showed originally only 1,700 ppm water in the produced fluids. And so, getting back to these two wells, there's no issue of inspecting for cement integrity or mechanical integrity because there is no cement. And I'm amazed that these wells were ever permitted. They would never pass muster now, because all wells require tubing and Packer and mechanical integrity tests of the Packers every, or the Packer and casing every five years. These wells have never been checked, ever.
Could I ask a question regarding those wells? Are you saying that in addition to them not having casings being injected with wastewater, that they are also near water that isn't impaired? Good...
Well, there was a test of some of the produced water that tested about 6,200 total dissolved solids that's going into the zone. But the indication on these data sheets, these are the California oil and gas data sheets, and this is for the silver thread area of the Ojai Field, that lists the produced water at the time, at least some of the sampling, at 1,700 ppm. water at the time, at least some of the sampling, at 1,700 ppm. Now, I also looked at what the fluid level was in these wells. Back in 1985 or '86, they actually did have a bottom hole pressure test, and it would indicate that the fluid level in the wells is around 60 feet, which is above the base of fresh water, or these water zones, at around 100 feet. And being that there's no cement, it doesn't really matter. It may well be that these 126-year-old casings may be total Swiss cheese because there's no cement to keep the waters from the producing zone from coming up the annulus of the old casings. So, anyway.
And the question I asked was just specific. While you may have a situation there where you have some contamination going in because it's waste, it's produced water going in, the question is, is that impacting drinking water? That's an important question, and so that was where I was trying to get with my question.
The way I would look at it would be that the Water Board ought to at least check this shallow aquifer to see if it's contaminated. There are no wells close to it to tell. And I would suspect that they are.
Okay. Thank you.
I have questions. I have questions. Thank you. Number one, I'm not sure you were finished. You were talking, and you got a question while you were talking. Did you still have something else as you were starting to finish? Are you done with your testimony? Great. So when we get technical data like this, you know, what you're presenting, we get this information at the hearing, it's always hard to digest it. And I just want to make sure that I get what you were just referring to. One time you said Well Nine and Well Thirteen, and then another time you said Well Nine and Well Eleven. Was that?
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Number Nine and Number Thirteen.
Good. Okay. So that was just a misstatement. All right. And then could you go back to what you were just referring to here at the end, which is that it's not lined, but you do have the well casing going down, and the 60 feet and the 125 feet? Could you be more clear or more specific about where the water is, where the fluid level is, and what the potential danger is here?
Well, normal water disposal wells would require tracer surveys showing where the water is going below a Packer and into perforations. The only requirement of these wells, when they were permitted to take water, was that temperature surveys be run on an annual basis. The operator thought that that was too much to ask. He asked for every three years. The Dogger said every two years. So the only tests that are run on these wells are temperature surveys that go down to wherever they can go. In one case, the well, one of the wells can't be, they can't go down to where the perforated interval, if there ever was one, is. And so those temperature surveys, normally they just show almost a straight line. They only vary by maybe two or so degrees from top to bottom, and so they don't tell you a great deal. What would tell you something is a pressure test. And I think the operator way back in, you know, 25, well, 30 years ago, said, if you tested these casings, they'd blow up. If you were to test them to, let's say, 1,000 pounds per square inch, you know, 126-year-old casing that's been not cemented, and the cement protects the outer portion of the casing by changing the pH, it actually is a good corrosion inhibitor outside casing. Well, there is nothing there, nothing. And so more than likely, the casing is shot.
What's at 60 feet? What's at 125 feet?
That's right.
No. What is at 60 feet, and what is at 125 feet?
Well, 125 feet is where I believe when they were mud logging, two of the wells close by indicated that they found water. And what they do is they log every 25 or 30 feet. And this is going back when they were using cable tools 120 or so years ago, where they were looking at what they were recovering every time they dropped their cable tool and recovered some material. They then logged what it was. So while they were drilling and punching down further and further, they indicated where they had sand, shale, rock, gravel, whatever it might have been, and oil shows. And so those two wells, the Pyramid Number One and the Ojai Seventeen, run by Thompson Oil, penetrated this zone, this water zone, a shallow water zone.
At 125 feet?
Between 90 and 120 feet. The Dogger, or at least your data, indicated that the base of fresh water for these wells should be around 200 feet, which if they were abandoned, would be good. I mean, if you placed a plug there, it would protect the shallower zones.
You say it would or wouldn't?
It would, yes.
So they're indicating, and again, going back to the early tests of the water quality in the oil-producing zone itself, it would be considered an exempt aquifer where you could not inject water or dispose of water if it came up right now. And also, it would not pass muster on the regular requirement that you test mechanically and test the integrity of the casing every five years.
Thank you. And when you say there's fluid at 60 feet, what are you referring to when you say there's fluid?
This is the fluid that's being dropped down the well. It's just like a hose at the top of the well that's just gravity dropped down the well. And that was back 30 years ago. And I haven't seen any indication of where the fluid level is now. If the fluid level, you know, if they pump more water than the well or the zone can take, it will eventually just overflow the well. In other words, it will just go out the top and flow out. So that 60 feet going back 30 years ago, yeah, would be where the fluid column in the well balances the formation pressure. So if you simply get the fluid level at the top and where the bottom is, and multiply by about .433 PSI per foot, you can tell what the pressure is in the zone itself. And so if the zone can't take the fluid any longer, eventually it will start getting to the point where it will go to the surface, and you have to reduce the amount of water you're putting away, or it's just going to overflow.
So a number of years ago, the fluid level was at 60 feet?
Well, again, that was the only indication I saw in the files. Where the bottom hole pressures were taken, they were plotted, and it indicates that the fluid level, where it goes, where it crosses the x-axis is where it would indicate that at zero elevation, it's air pressure, you know, atmospheric pressure. Down 60 feet is where the pressure increases with the fluid column depth.
And water at, the test results in there indicate water at 125 feet some time ago?
Well, it was never tested. It was just indicated while they were doing this mud log.
The report indicates. Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for the questions.
Our next speaker then is Bob Nast.
Friends and neighbors, and the board, and I'm assuming that's all together now. That's all one unit we're talking about. Anyway, my name is Bob Nast. I work at Hollywood Beach. I strongly suggest that the fact-based information presented here today by SeaFrog and others, namely, a retired engineer from Dogger, that it would persuade you to conduct at a minimum baseline water testing. It's been over two and a half years ago that I met with Ventura County's Public Works Agency Director Jeff Pratt, along with the subject matter expert, Dr. Tom Williams, asking Mr. Pratt to conduct relatively inexpensive one-time tests. Concurrently, I asked Oxnard City Council members, is there anybody here from Oxnard City Council representing them? I didn't think there would be. Brian McDonald to look into doing the same. I also asked my local Water Board, which is a noun and not a verb, just for everybody's information, the Channel Islands Beach Community Services District Board of Directors to do the same on the nine wells located in the Oreo area owned and operated by United. These wells supply 80% of the public drinking water for Channel Islands, Oxnard, Port Winnebago, and the military bases in Ventura County. The testing would have been prudent, responsive, and responsible by my, no luck. So I decided to run for the Channel Islands Water District myself. My motto, if you can't, be a joiner. I'm asking Ventura County to conduct critical baseline testing of public drinking water, looking for fracking and agricultural runoff-related toxins. I've been unsuccessfully trying for the past two and a half years to get the current board to conduct its vital, low-cost, one-time test. Note, local environmental advocates, including R.L. Miller, the Chair of the California Democratic Party Environmental Caucus, endorse this test. I quote R.L., "I won't be able to make the meeting tomorrow night. However, I agree with the idea of baseline testing within Ventura County and the city of Oxnard, using a cross-benefit analysis, the cost is very reasonable, while the potential benefits are huge. It's a small but necessary step the city and county can take before SB Four is implemented and all will work to pass SB 1132 to better protect the citizens of Ventura County from fracking and climate change exacerbating dirty oil." Parenthetically, unfortunately, SB Four did not go far enough. We just talked about 500 feet. That's a travesty. Did not go far enough, and SB 11 is calling, that was calling for fracking moratorium, was defeated by oil and gas industry after over $5 million in lobbying. Thank you, whispered. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. And our last public comment speaker is Carla Castilla.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair, members of the Board, CEO, and staff. I'm a resident of Ventura County. My name, Carla Castilla. The potential for contamination and pollution is ongoing. Recent test results demonstrate the need for greater accountability, transparency, vigilance, testing, data gathering, and enforcement to protect our precious unlimited water table, watersheds, and aquifers. It's absolutely necessary. The County of Ventura has a responsibility to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of us all, and I commend the steps taken so far. With that, I respectfully request that the County continue to protect our health and place the well-being of the community first over corporate interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castilla. That concludes our public comments on this item. There was, if I could ask a question regarding one of the reported sumps, I guess, from SeaFrog in their letter. I don't know if this is information for the county, but it does discuss how the local agency, I'm sorry, the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, it states, had two inspectors, and one was found that there was crude oil being put in a sump on McGrath Farm property. And I was just wondering, is that something that you're aware of, or if that is something that the county would be involved with?
Yeah, Chair Parks, as I mentioned in the presentation, we were not aware of that. We have been trying to contact the Regional Board staff to follow up on the contents of the letter. Haven't gotten a hold of them just yet to talk through.
Okay, I do remember you saying you haven't been able to contact them yet, the Regional Board. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Chris, on the option number three, I think you might have mentioned to me that the state is still working on that database.
The, well, the database suggested there would be one that we would pull together the testing results that we have available to us. Some of them would be from the state. They post some of them on their webpages. Our Public Works Agency also has a substantial amount of information, as well as those that we may have in our files and environmental health. We'll be pulling that together into a unified database that we could post to make available on our webpage.
Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
So my first question is, have you had a chance, SeaFrog pointed out in their letter, that they didn't get the report in advance as promised. Have you had a chance, I know you've read that before you came in here, did you have a chance to go back and look at the record and find out whether we had directed you to make sure that got out in advance, or you had agreed to get it out in advance?
Yes. I had met with SeaFrog representatives shortly after the Board's last hearing. We talked about sharing data and information as we move forward. And as I indicated to them, my intention was to send this out to them before I had gone on a vacation. I did not do that. I sent it out to them when I returned on October 8, the data for them to look at, and the Board letter. The Board letter itself is posted, as you know, the Thursday prior to the Board meeting. So I had hoped to get that data out to them about two and a half weeks prior to that, but I did not do that, unfortunately. And so I didn't get the data out as I had hoped.
When we have, when we have these reports that are out there that everybody knows is coming, whether it's short-term rentals or whatever, it just, I think it doesn't make sense for the report to come out on the Thursday before the Tuesday hearing. We just constantly hear that. And so then we're sitting here, number one, hearing that from people saying, and I can appreciate if you're at all, if you've got anything else going on in life, you get something on Friday morning, and you've got to be, you've got to have it researched and backed. So that's, just to, I want to express that again, and I think we need to change that. I'm going to be very reluctant to take action on a Tuesday for a report that we knew in advance, you know, everybody was waiting for, and all of that. Partially because what I would, what we benefit the most from, from the policy side, is you guys do your report, they give their response, you give your response to their response. So I would say to them, you know, if they get the report, you know, just like this whole thing that they've now submitted, I'd like to hear your response to all of this. And it's hard for you to respond here, hearing some stuff, you know, right here in this hearing. Based on what you have heard, which if, my summary is certainly that the Upper Ojai, number one, we have a test result that shows some contamination. Are you in agreement that that's a bona fide test result?
We are trying to contact the Regional Board. I'm assuming that it is at this point, and we would like to talk to the Regional Board further, particularly to see whether or not those results, and they are far more expert at this than us and our staff, as how they might relate to oil activity. That portion of it has not been, that connection hasn't been made, as far as I can tell from the information.
So that's an example of the benefit of, if we would have released early, then we would, then I would be saying to them, well, why didn't you tell us that early so that we could, you know, if they had that and stuff? Because certainly quite a bit in their report, they probably could have sent to us earlier if they could sort of had all of this, all of this down and stuff. So have you heard anything in the information? Let's assume that the information is accurate about the test results in Upper Ojai. Does that change your recommendations here? And I know you don't have recommendations. You've just presented us with four options. And then I want to ask you some questions about the four options. But does it change the four options that you have in front of us for us to consider?
I don't believe so. I think one of the options, we talk about targeting some of our information based on information we might have available. We may want to target information in that area of Ojai under that. I think that was the second or third option. I can't recall which. But I think at this point, and we didn't phrase it as a recommendation, I expressed to the Board, we will be following up with the Regional Board staff on all of this information to determine what it does mean for the County of Ventura and what to determine what it does mean for the County of Ventura and what our options are based on that new information. And we will be providing a report back to the Board on that. So that could be phrased as a recommendation to direct us to do that work, but it's our intention to do it regardless.
So we... certainly groundwater is going to become more... a more and more important topic in Ventura County. It's a... it's certainly going to become more and more essential as the drought continues and as we have climate change impacts. You know, the groundwater is just going to be a very important asset. So it offered that there are really two, in my mind, there's two policy... there's two rationales for good policy here with regard to this. One is the potential for actual contamination. We want to make sure that we minimize, you know, all reasonable... you know, all reasonableness, the potential for any contamination. So far, there hasn't been a lot of data of contamination out there. So there's, you know, outside of this one report that you're getting ready to investigate right now, we don't have a lot of that. But the other is, there is a role in public health, well-being, and safety. There is a role in public confidence. And public confidence is... has been shaken with the state agencies, with Dogger, with this whole issue of injection wells and some of the findings of the media in terms of what's going on. And so it seems to me that it's healthy for Ventura County to have a policy that can keep public confidence high because it is such an important resource. But to do it in a rational and reasonable way... I mean, we can keep public confidence high by testing every well every day, you know, but not be reasonable and rational. We also have state agencies that we have to keep pushing to do the job that they're supposed to do. So I'm trying to find that policy place for us that addresses both. One, make sure we really don't have contamination and that we do what we can to make sure we don't get the contamination. Because that's the first thing, is you don't even want to have it. And the other is this issue. And so, you know, the calls for testing, et cetera, and what's reasonable. I'm really... I'm looking to staff that works in the field a lot, the two of you in particular, to help the Board with advice on policy that can help with this confidence level thing and still stay within the realm of reasonableness as we go forward. So I have some specific thoughts, you know, I have some, you know, I mean, some thoughts on these recommendations. Certainly, you know, Ms. Holly talking about never really thought about having her well tested. The recommendation here of a strong recommendation, but not mandatory, that people do, you know, do test their wells certainly makes sense to me. You know, provide and prepare for all the applicants for individual water systems, a fact sheet. Those two things are very clear. The database comes down to, you know, what data do we have and how can we do that? And the ordinance, the, you know, for the water quality testing, the... for the small water systems, et cetera, I'd like to hear more about that as you get these results back from them, et cetera. But I'd like to hear from my other colleagues about that. But those are the two big policy things I'd have out there, is actual and confidence level.
Supervisors, you're recommending that those four options be recommendations to staff to study? Is that...
Well, not... yeah, not... it's certainly one and two I want to do, and three, just three, I think, makes sense, assuming that we can find a practical way to do it. And then four, if I'm going to adopt an ordinance, I might want more in the ordinance or less in the ordinance based on what we find out. But, you know, water quality for new individual water systems must meet the state drinking water standards for benzene. I'm not opposed to adding that, but I... but I want... is that what we want to have? When you write an ordinance, you don't do that very often. You really do that right?
That's right.
I'm not ready to say what I would want to have in an ordinance if, you know...
Or to come back.
I'd want to hear back from staff more. I'd want to hear from my colleagues also about the kind of things that they would support so I know where to go with it, where to go with this.
So come back with some recommendations once they study it some more.
Certainly going to want to hear back from that.
Okay.
Other members of the Board?
And the state... I'm sorry, one thing. The small water systems monitoring every three years seems to make sense to me. I'd like to make sure I hear from staff about the practicalities, how... what are the size of these small water systems? I assume benzene tests, as we've heard, are not that expensive, but are... is it more than benzene? Right now, this just says must monitor for benzene. I'm going, "Well, if you monitor benzene, why not monitor for..."
Well, I mean...
You know, it's so... I just... I need more information to go there. Thank you.
Supervisor Dunn?
Well, the first thing I would say is I appreciate the work on the report, and perhaps it should have just been delayed a little longer to give the community who is greatly interested in this work to have a chance to review it. And I don't know what transpired there. Doesn't matter at this point. I think going forward, though, I think it would be imperative that we have both clear direction to staff and staff's ability to complete their work and Regional Water Quality Control Board, you know, we need to... and I know we have good relationships with them on most issues and most times, and I'm sure it's like any organization, they have different pressures and staffing, you know, issues. But to be able to get the information and raise our concerns or questions with regional water to make sure that they have their roles and responsibilities and what we're seeing in our county and how they can answer questions for us, perhaps asking that that certainly move forward with further dialogue with regional water. I think the... probably the first three recommendations are a first step, and there is no question. The community is greatly concerned about how can they trust? And that is our role. And I think everything we can do to empower our agencies to be able to have both the tools they need and the regular report out to the Board on how are we doing with ensuring the public that we have oversight where is appropriate in our regulatory role on the clean water components and drinking water. So I think there have been, over the last five years, a variety of press exposures, for lack of a better word, in other parts of the state that have really challenged whether or not even regional water quality control needs to step up their game to be able to assure the public that the oversight is in place and that the measurement tools and the current regulations are as strong as they can be. I clearly... I don't think we're... this board member is not ready to move forward in an ordinance action until there's more information to be gathered from regional water quality control and understanding. They should see what we... what your report has, you know, has been brought forward to the Board. The staff at regional water should hear that from you, have further discussion where there's ability to have a better understanding of how we as a Board can assure our public that we're being as proactive as possible and not just sitting back for regional water to litigate or change some rules. So it's generally... I appreciate the staff report.
Supervisor Foy?
Yeah, no. Before I get into the water thing, Supervisor Bennett, I would love to figure out how we can come together and try to put together some type of a thing on this Board that this kind of information is out two, three weeks. And we've, you know, I've been... we've all been complaining, and we've had a lot of the public complain about issue because it's hard to take a lot of this stuff in and then go someplace and try to call somebody up and say, "What does this really mean?" And, you know, all that kind of work. And at the end of the day, they do all this good work, and they'd like to have it evaluated by us and everybody else. And I think that would be a great thing for all of us to come together and figure out that anything that's longer than this, or anything that has technical information, it's got to be two weeks, three weeks, or whatever, you know? And then they'd get information back, and then when they come here, they would have some more of those answers.
And just to follow up, if you have other comments. Just the other day, I said something to staff about that, and they said, "Well, we want the Board to get the report first." And I, you know, and I can appreciate sort of their sort of saying that. And I'm going, "Well, I don't have any problem with getting the report ten days in advance," you know?
Ten, twenty days, we can look at it personally.
Twenty days. If we get it in advance, and then they can change their, you know, they can at least...
And I agree.
They can supplement, I guess, not change.
There's a lot of good things the public needs to hear, and, yeah, and I agree with that. So anyway, I would... whatever we can do to get that out, and then if we get it out and they have to delay, you know, it's good. Because again, I don't want their good work to be misinterpreted by the public or under us. Okay. But on the other side of this, too, I mean, there's no question, we ought to do whatever we can to make sure the standards of good, clean water are out there. There's no question about it. We've got to be capable... like I said, at my own place, I want to test, I want to do that, and it was great because it's been two years, and I text my wife, "Go make sure that water is... we're testing there before the holidays come up." But I think it's important that we do. And, you know, a lot of things don't change. But I also thought, you know, the idea that people have tested in a certain area, "Okay, I've got a ranch next to you, or I've got a lot next to you that I don't have water, I'm going to drill." You're going to know if that was kind of public knowledge, what's in that area when you drill wells and those kind of things. So I think it's good. Just trying to find that because it sounds like we really haven't had a lot of issues in the county. But again, we don't know. And so we want to try to balance that out. I don't want to say the state's not doing a great job of what they're doing. But again, at the end of the day, if I have a small well and I, you know, the idea that I'm testing it every couple of years, that kind of thing, and I send a report to the county, so the county just has it on record, that's not that big a deal. I said, I don't think they... as I've found, it doesn't cost a whole lot to do that. But one of the things you do, if you're going to live in these areas and have this property, you're going to do, you know, you need to test the water because we want to make sure that you're safe, and you don't know what changes in your water. So I have no problem with that. But I agree with you. I'm probably not ready to make some kind of an ordinance with that, but I do want us to, like you said, don't go overboard with it, test every day. Somebody says, "Well, that's the best way." Well, you know, you can't do that. But in the same sense, the areas that we all live in, we want to make sure their water's clean. So and again, I haven't seen where the... this stuff has been in there because I'm sure we would have seen a lot of people testing and say, "Well, I got benzene or something in my water." So I don't believe that there's that. But there should be some understanding that the county would come to us and say, "Out of the wells we see, we see it, we have that, we understand, we're doing very well, people are comfortable, we know where issues are." I think that would give confidence to the public out here, too.
Thank you. It is surprising to see that we have wells from the 1800s that are being used for wastewater injection and that they have no casings, that they got permitted to continue use. Part of being an old county like we are and being a major, you know, oil drilling county for many of its years, there are these antiquated, you know, wells out there. And so I would like to hear the information from the Water Board on this. I would also, you know, looking at what was found by the Water Board when they were looking at a sump out on the McGrath Farm seeing crude oil, that's a concern, too. So I feel if we have more information in terms of, we'll have a better idea on what we need to correct if we can. And so I'm not ready to make that recommendation until I have that information. I also share the rest of the Board's concern about the lateness of the report getting out to the stakeholders. This was something that we had requested to hold off until we can get that. I also understand, though, it is difficult to get on the Board agenda sometimes from a staff position. Certainly, the Board doesn't have that problem as much. You pretty much put things on earlier. So I understand there's a pipeline you go through, if you will, excuse the expression. But I'm sure with a continuance of this, we can get that information, and when you have it available, we can get it on our Board agenda.
Were you trying to say something?
Yeah, just thank you, Chair Parks. We hear you loud and clear, and we'll make that a practice in terms of getting these reports out earlier. And I appreciate the recognition of RMA staff and the number of report backs they're doing and the quality of the work that they're doing, too, as well.
You know what, if I might, would be helpful, too, when you do come back, not to... that is, we have had a few discussions at the Board, workshops on oil, and we've made specific requests that, you know, are still coming forward. I know, for example, to be able to map where the pipelines are for oil if we're looking at for water. But it would be kind of good to get that summary of what it is that we know we're going to be doing, the information we are going to have available if we want to put together a site for the public to have better information. And then I think about how there are individuals out there that are getting their wells tested. They are certified reports of the testing of their well, if they want to voluntarily provide that. That's something else we can put up there on our information for the public using the certified monitor reports that are available. I think that would be helpful for the public, too. That's just a... you have something to say, Mr. Stevens? Go for it.
Yeah. The Board members, I wanted to respond, I guess, to a couple of the comments made by the Board. First off, I think you've articulated well our objectives with respect to this. They are to protect our groundwater, vitally important, as well as to provide information to the public so they're as informed as possible. When you look at the options that we outlined for the Board today, they kind of cover both of those areas. I don't see in talking with Mr. Stratton there, I don't see any reason why we couldn't proceed, certainly with option one, to provide a... put together a fact sheet that we can make available, as well as, excuse me, option three, to start working on pulling together information for a database, as we say in the report, including those submitted voluntarily, so we would have that available to the public. That would address, to the extent we can today, information available to the public so they're well-informed. And then we will also be following up with the regional board, as I said, to get more information on these test results that were provided to us by SeaFrog. Depending on the information that we get from the regional board, well, regardless of that information, we would come back to the Board, report to you what those findings were, and that information, if it indicates there is an issue, that's where we would kind of move to our other objective, which is to protect our groundwater aquifer, and that might be where we identify very specific ordinance amendments or other actions the Board can take. We don't have that information available today to do that. And I would add one last thing is that we actually are in the process of going through our ordinance because it needs to be updated. It has not... when was it first adopted, Bill?
Many years ago.
Okay. Many... it was adopted many years ago. It was in need of being revisited and being updated. So the timing of this may dovetail very nicely with that. So if we have the information from the regional board, we can bring that back to you at that time as part of that action.
Madam Chair? Can I show my... I know you make a... I just want to thank staff, you know, Madam Chair, and Bill, and, I mean, Chris and Bill, and also SeaFrog for your information. I think it's important that we understand that. And thank you again. It's a really good report, and I think the options are good options, and I'm sure that Supervisor Bennett is getting ready to make a motion here.
Thanks.
Well, if I might, I have a... just a thought. Because of the issue raised on the sump, the old sumps.
Yes.
And our county has a history of oil, and it's been a solid history in the sense of, you know, the founding places for Union Oil and the... anyway, the history here. But I know there are other counties like Kern and others that... so I wonder, and I'm not asking you to do this, perhaps it's something that could come from Dogger or from the Whisper Group or others as to what discussions or papers are out there on some old sump wells and kind of, you know, how are they being addressed, handled, you know? You know, the ones that you spoke to, if I understood that right, we're talking a gravity action, not a purposeful injection action? I don't know.
Right.
If I understood that right, so...
How the wastewater gets in, whether it's gravity or injected.
Right. So, and, yeah, and so what are the implications of that? So I just have to think that there are other counties having some of the same questions or experiences on those sump wells.
So, well, thank you. The motion that I would like to ask the Board to entertain is one here, is that to make a priority to investigate the sump pump situation that we have in upper Ojai and contact the Regional Water Control Board, find out what their advice is, and analyze that advice, and come back with... Board, uh, find out what their advice is, and analyze that advice, and come back with staff's recommendation, not necessarily the Regional Water Control Board's recommendation, but analyze, uh, analyze that and then have staff come back with their advice regarding what to do with that particular situation, and that is, where at least there have been, there have been reports of contaminated groundwater, and based on the engineer here, the retired engineer, certainly that, you, you could, you, common sense would say there's a potential for a, a logical connection between the two. Two, um, investigate, have, have staff try to investigate where else do we have these legacy sump pumps, sump wells that are out there, gravity, you know, fed wells where we could have this problem, um, if there's something else out there. Uh, I very much appreciate what SeaFrog has brought to the table, which is, um, sort of a counterbalancing force. Usually when we'd have a hearing like this, you're always going to hear from the industry representatives, and that's very appropriate, and they're, they're doing their job, but ha- hearing from a, a group on the other side identifying this kind of information is exactly what citizens, kind of groups like this, that's a, that's a valuable role that they can play. But they shouldn't be the only ones that are trying to find, you know, that information and in this, in this area of building confidence, I'm making this much longer motion, I'll come back and summarize it, all right? Uh, but in this area of building confidence, um, we want to have our staff, you know, not have it be that always it's somebody else who finds us that we identify. Now that we've, now that there's been a, a problem called, are the, does this exist anywhere else? So that's a question, I like staff, when they come back, answers, answer the question, has, has staff been able to check out and find out, does this potential problem exist other places in the county? Um, as, and then, then three, um, your, your first recommendation is develop the fact sheet, uh, for applicants, you know, for individual water systems. And it seems to me that questions three and four, I mean, I mean, recommendations one and two can kind of go together, which one is, a fact sheet for new people, but a recommended but not required test protocol, and I wouldn't say just for benzene, but test protocol for whatever it is that after you talk to the regional board, after you see this, you know, now that we have toluene that's, that has shown up in, in the test, but, uh, test protocol, that that could be given to the people that come as applicants, but it also could be sent to known well owners, uh, out there, so that they, they are informed about that. And then your third recommendation, and that is, um, give us a report on the feasibility of, uh, putting all this publicly available information into some kind of database that can be updated and people can get voluntary information sent to it, and some placing, somebody can go to one place, that's going to be a confidence builder for the public. So those are, so, so my, my, my three, my, my four recommendations are, make a priority to investigate the information provided by SeaFrog about the, uh, about the, uh, Upper Ojai, uh, potential contamination and potential relations to the sump pump up there. Two, investigate other potential legacy sump pumps, because they seem like they're riskier, um, they're, they're, they pose the greater risk at this point in time. Three, take recommendation one, uh, and combine it with recommendation two, um, so that we create a recommended, uh, testing protocol and fact sheet, uh, about state drinking water standards, um, and expand it beyond benzene to the extent that staff feels that's appropriate. And then the fourth recommendation is, uh, report on creating this database, uh, for publicly available well test information, and encourage people to voluntarily provide information if they can. So that'd be my recommendation.
Would you consider adding to that, uh, what staff said they would do, which is report back on the Regional Water Board on the, uh, property over on Mc, on McGrath farmland with the surface pits?
Yes.
Mm-hmm, that have crude oil reported? Thank you. So that, you got that one, too, Brian?
Yeah, so it's five.
And the motion also include receiving file report?
Sure. Six. Receiving file, that was receiving file report for anybody that didn't hear, Brian, right?
Chris, if, does that, are we, what are we saying here, from, from your standpoint?
Always the most, always the most dangerous question for staff.
I know, he hate that, but, I mean, it all sounds good from up here, but what do you, what do you do?
It's a fair question.
Yeah, because I want to make sure that they can say that works and doesn't work.
I, I welcome it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, what, what I heard was that, uh, you were directing us to move forward with options one and two, I'll call it combo plate, for lack of a better, uh, description at this point, we will, will move forward with those, that we also, um, work with the Regional Water Quality Control Board on the issues that are raised in, in the SeaFrog comments, uh, with particular attention paid to the sump issue and the legacy sumps, and identifying those issues associated with those, uh, and also to report back to you on, uh, the, and I'll call it, uh, the, the database project, we'll call that for, for lack of a better term at this point, uh, report that back to the board. Uh, I'm assuming as part of that, if we determined that it's a, a relatively, uh, simple exercise and feasible, that we would, our report back would be telling you, we've done that, uh, that we would perceive that, and they just do it in our parlance in, uh, continuous improvement. Uh, and, uh, I think that that covers the, uh, main issues as I see them.
Okay, let, let me ask, I know, uh, right now we do testing to a certain level or certain, trying to find things. You talked about benzene and maybe whatever other things. Let me know, let, is there, you know, as you get into more tests, like, kind of like doing blood tests, and you get deeper and deeper and deeper, and it requires a whole lot more cost and stuff. So you talked about in your, these, these, these tests maybe cost between 90 and $300, sometime like that. When you get into these other things, is that, is that the same, you can find that within that test, or that's requiring a whole different type of test, or what? Do you have an idea?
My, my understanding, and, and I think Ms. Holly mentioned it, that her test was something in the order of $350 or, or something like that. That, that actually is for, uh, it's, we'll use the blood test analogy, where you do a panel, so that would be the organics test, so that would, that's my understanding, is that's not just benzene. We focused on benzene because that was the initial, uh, direction, but that would just be one of the organics tests that you would do. So, uh, we will look into that further and be, you know, reporting back to you.
Yeah, so come back, because, I mean, some of this, but, yeah, you all of a sudden say, well, we'd like to have you test every three years, and all of a sudden it comes back to you $3,000 or $10,000, and we've never had an issue. So that's, I would, you know, as we're looking at these kind of things, to have some of that information come back.
Yeah, we're sensitive to that issue, that, that's why we raised that in the board letter, and gave you some of those cost parameters.
Yeah, because a lot of people say, I can't do that, so.
So two, so two things, I think partially your question was, is, is what we're asking of staff doable?
Yeah, that's one thing.
And I, I think I'm hearing him say, feels doable to you, in terms of what we're asking. And the second thing, which is appropriate, if we ask people to do $5,000 tests, they won't do any tests.
They won't do anything.
We'd be better off asking people to do what is reasonable, and that, and that's, and we want to, we want to pay attention to that as we're doing that. So, but if a panel is $300, I, the report says benzene, and I just didn't want somebody to say, well, the report only says benzene, you know, so that's why I wanted it to be.
Other constituents, yeah.
But it's farmland.
Please, sir, while making sure you may have some of those things, but it goes back to some of those, maybe some of them aren't doing that, to affect information, you have your own relationship with, but it should, it should say, we're not, I appreciate you.
Yeah, we, we will work, I think, as we reported to the board last time, uh, our water and sanitation, uh, districts, they do these tests on a regular basis for their wells. We can easily contact them, find out what the, what the cost is for that level of test and, and what's included in addition to benzene, and, and looking to that further.
Yeah, it's just.
I refer to a situation that we're out, please, located on the oxide claim.
We do have a motion and a second, and, uh, good notes from our court. Can we please vote?
And Chris, if I could just, just ask, you don't have to get up, I just, when you bring those test results, or what they cost, from maybe two or three different labs, whatever else they do, that versus somebody said it's this, you know, it'd be good to clarify those, thanks.
Okay, and that passes unanimously and, um, well timed. You said it would be an hour and a half, and it was an hour and a half. Thank you very much for your input today, it was very helpful for us, appreciate you coming down and your comments and input. And I, I guess at this point then, we will go to closed session and, um, adjourn from closed session, we're not anticipating any announcements. Is that correct, County Council?
That is correct, but I hate to say, there, there is a small chance there could be an announcement.
Okay, with a small chance of an announcement. Barring that, we will go ahead and, um, close from closed session unless there is an announcement.